Okay. You're watching the Penfield Planning Board Work Session before a public hearing.
Nice water.
March 14th, 2019. Allison, please call the board.
Hetske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Canauer.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nurseinger.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Weiser.
Here.
Okay, we have minutes from February 7. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review them.
Move folks up?
Second.
Okay, moved in second is?
That was Burton.
Burton and Tidings.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
They're not connected with the computer.
Hmm. Okay, so we have problems, technical difficulties?
Throw in an HDMI cable in for this whole projector thing that we have.
Okay.
In the meantime, I don't really need it for the first table item.
Okay.
See how that goes. So, we have one table item, two people have to recuse themselves before I start talking about it for the Wilburts' application.
Would you be referring to me?
And Mr. Canauer.
Mr. Burton and Mr. Canauer.
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself from the Wilburts' tabled application if I may.
No problem. No problem.
Usually, I start talking and then we forget this.
See you in a minute.
Trying to be good, getting better in 2019. It was my resolution this year.
Okay, so we can vote on accepting lead agency tonight, I assume?
Correct. At the last meeting, the board typed this a Type 1 action under SEAGIR because it's located in an ag district. Therefore, we started the process for a Type 1 action and sending out letters for lead agency. We did receive feedback, and all of it supported the planning board being the lead agency for this project. Therefore, the comment period has closed, and as you said, the board is in a position now to take a vote to accept the position of lead agency for the project.
I would do so. Make the motion.
Motion to accept as the lead agency.
All second.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
All right, they are officially lead agency.
Great job.
Exciting.
Quick updates. They are working on revised plans and responses to comments from both the PRC memo that was issued before the public hearing last month, as well as the comments collected at the public hearing. They've also submitted a zoning board of appeals application for an extension to a pre-existing non-conforming use, which they are within the RA2 district. So, that will go on for the zoning board's April agenda is what it's scheduled for. But other than that, I do not have any significant updates for the board at this time, other than the lead agency thing we just took care of.
Okay.
We still working on doing a walkthrough with everybody?
Yes, my plan was to do that after the zoning board had their public hearing, and then both boards could have an opportunity to partake in that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, if there aren't any other questions, we can continue table it, all the other good stuff.
Do you want to make the motion to table at this point?
All second.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Interesting how it doesn't really work.
Still have some technical challenges, huh?
Yeah.
Maybe Mike could fix it.
Exactly. And welcome back, board members, Burton and Canauer.
Could be. Could be pilot error.
We'll take care of it. The three things that we have as action items, we do not need a projector for, so we can worry about that after the fact.
All right. Creek Street?
Yes, 1280 Creek Street, Cattopia Project that the board previously approved. They are seeking 180-day site plan extension so that they can finalize their construction plans and financing to begin work this year.
Do you have an issue?
Second.
Burton and Bastian.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
All right.
Excellent. Next one, a site plan extension request for 2035, what was the project known as 2035 Five Mile Line Road. It was the Williams Residence. This is a project that subdivided a lot off of, help me out here, which nursing home? Is it Heritage Christian? Heritage Christian Services property. They create a new lot there. They are looking to build, begin site work this spring. However, they weren't able to get all the county permits in line yet before the one-year extension came up, so they asked for a simple 90-day extension for their site plan approval.
Make the motion.
Should we go 180 days? Yes, we typically do that because it's just too close to the.
It's no problem. I was just capturing what they requested.
Move to approve 180-day extension. All second.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
No one's keeping track of the score, guys, come on. Last one, even simpler, where, I don't have the maps. If you recall, as part of the Delta Sonic project that took place, that was approved in November of last year, the project involved two parcels, one that they acquired next door, was a former laundromat, I believe. They're looking just to merge those two properties together. Currently, they are 1841 and 1773 Empire Boulevard. They have a plat map that they submitted yesterday for the board to consider to merge the two properties together. Typically, just need authorization to do so.
No issues on the zoning site?
Not at all.
After we approve. Second.
Is that what they're waiting for, to start construction?
No, they're not waiting for us, no. They're, it's just, they're still working on when they're going to have their start date, but we have a couple easements that we need to take care of, and merging the properties will take care of that through the required property maintenance agreement. So, I heard Burton and Canauer.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Canauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Nope.
All big ones, little big ones, action items?
Concludes table and action items. All that's left is a public hearing this evening.
All right. With that said, we will recess, and we convene at 7 o'clock up on the dials for the public All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 14th, 2019 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. We have a packed house, I see. We have a fairly busy agenda this evening. If you could all make sure that cell phones, pagers are silent or turned off for the meeting so that they don't become distracting, that would be terrific. The way these meetings work is the applicant will present their project to the board. They will describe it, then the board will ask questions, then we'll open it up to the audience. You may have noticed on the table back there, these slips of paper. You don't necessarily have to fill one out, but if you'd like to speak, if you could fill it out, it'd be terrific. If not, I'll start with these, and then, once we get through with these, if you raise your hand, you want to say something, I'll call you up. If I call you up, please come up to the podium over here, state your name and address for the record, and address all of your comments to the board. Please don't address comments to the applicant, and keep them as concise and pertinent as possible. We are here for public input. The first application that we have is a sketch plan application. A sketch plan is an unofficial, it's not an actual application for development. So, that said, there typically, these types of applications or these types of presentations lack a lot of detail. It's an opportunity for a developer, an applicant, to present an idea or a concept to the town and get feedback before they commit too many resources in engineering studies and survey work and traffic studies and that sort of thing. So, a sketch plan may or may not come back for an actual approval. So, just keep that, please keep that in mind for those of you who are here for the Jackson Road sketch plan. With that, Zach, please read our first agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sketch plan application number one, Marathon Engineering, 39 Cascade Drive, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Combat Construction Incorporated, request an informal discussion before the board with plans for a 75-lot residential subdivision under Town Law 278 with associated site improvements on a total of 90.5 acres located at 1394 and 1440 Jackson Road. The properties are now reformally owned by Lupo Brothers Family Trust, Prindanoff Family Trust, Kazanich Family Trust, Peter Rubino G. De Pisa, and Santa Pachuyo, probably butchered that, whoops, and zoned RR1. Application number 19P-0006, SBL numbers 095.03-1-39 and 110.01-1-4. All yours, Matt.
Thanks. I'm Matt Donaldson from Marathon Engineering. With me today is Mike D'Amico, Combat Construction, as well as representatives from Ryan Holmes. As Zach mentioned, we're discussing 1394 and 1440 Jackson Road totaling 90 and 1/2 acres. Just to orient the board, we're at the southeast corner of the intersection of Plank and Jackson, and it's the two parcels currently there. There's several out parcels with existing homes on them surrounded by this property. And as Zach mentioned, the existing or underlying zoning is RR1. One of the main purposes that we want to accomplish and discuss with the planning board, as we have with town staff and at the PRC meeting, is to establish the density for this project. If you'll remember, we were here for the Five Mile and Atlantic a couple years ago with the same ownership and construction team, and went through this same process in order to come to a number of lots that determines the density that can be built in the cluster based on the underlying zoning, as well as how we're going to get to that number, taking into account the environmental factors such as wetlands and other constraints of the site to ensure that we're not building more lots than could be supported with the existing zoning. So, with that, I wanted to talk through just a little bit of the existing piece of property and the underlying zoning so I can highlight the differences. The RR1 is a 1-acre minimum size with 150-foot minimum width and a 50-foot front setback. So, those three items are the three that we would like to modify for the cluster request. We're requesting an 80-foot lot, 200 feet deep, a width of 80 feet at the front setback instead of the 150, and front setbacks of 40 feet. We would propose to leave the side and rear setbacks the same as the underlying zoning. That would be a 10-foot side setback and 30-foot minimum for the rear. Water, storm, water, gas, electric are all on or near the site. We would be proposing an off-site sanitary force main extension headed west along Plank Road to a town-owned sewer and manhole at Schu craft Road for that intersection, so we'd be going down past Schutz. And I believe that the overall map showing that route was provided in the packet to the board. We have addressed, and I believe the board has a copy of the PRC comments that we received. Most of those comments related to either lot configuration or requesting additional detail on specific lots. And one of the things that we provided in order to hopefully address some of the comments that the board may have were plot plans of some of the lots that are not typical rectangular 1-acre configurations to demonstrate to the board and to staff that we are providing an actual buildable lot with some of those configurations. So, I think there's between 10 and 15 of those that were provided to the board. We've also identified some wetlands impacts and potential mitigation areas. Again, we're not intending to build the base zoning layout, but we're intending to show the board that we can, could build it, if that was our intention. Just wanted to summarize some of the benefits of the cluster development that we are proposing. Length of road compared to the base zoning versus the cluster. Base zoning, in order to build what we have submitted, would be about 6,800 feet of roadway. In the cluster, we cut that in half at 3,450. So, there's the upfront savings in construction, but there's also less ongoing maintenance for the town and repairs, snow plowing, everything that comes along with that for the ongoing maintenance, once it's turned over for dedication. With the base zoning, in order to build the number of lots that we would need to build to make this financially viable, we'd be clearing approximately 80 of the 90 acres on the site in order to do that. With the cluster, we'd be clearing somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 acres. Part of that is required, obviously, for the lots and the roadway, but the stormwater management facility and some of the grading that would be required. But then, those areas would ultimately be covered under a conservation easement or be owned by the town and left wild. One of the large benefits of that reduction in clearing is a significant increase in buffering to the neighbors. There are tons of neighbors out here, but there are neighbors. And so, in the base zoning, the backyards for those lots would line right up to all the exterior property lines. With this cluster approach, as you can see, it really leaves significant buffers both out at the roadway, not putting lots right at the entrances, as well as large areas of woods and wetland that would remain untouched. And then, wetland impacts, potential, we will have to go through a full delineation and jurisdictional determination with the Army Corps of Engineers, but our wetland impacts are limited to potential small one over here at this wetland. The wetland and stream over in this area would be untouched. In the base zoning, we would have.
If you turn around, can you pick up the microphone?
Yep. So, that pretty much is what we wanted to cover from an upfront informational piece. We're more than happy to answer or step through any of the plot plans or lots that the board may have some comment on, and if I can't answer it, I'm sure one of these gentlemen can.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a copy of the conventional plan up there that you could bring up? Can you explain how you're proposing to work around the wetlands and get the number of lots that you're proposing?
Sure. So, I'll kind of step through from plank down, if that makes it easiest. So, in order to fit in the roadways, we would need to impact, and I've taken that to or just outside the right-of-ways to demonstrate a realistic grading limits, if you will, for construction of those roadways. So, typically, for federal wetlands, which these are, you're required to mitigate at least 1 and 1/2 to 1 ratio for any impact to wetlands. And so, we would be, with this current plan, the impact areas are along the edge of wetland here, along this finger of wetland here, and then a small portion for driveway and grading limits and backyard creation up on that wetland. And so, what we're showing here is approximately 0.6 acres of impact to wetland out of the total seven or so that are on the site. And we're proposing a couple of areas of mitigation which need to be in proximity and connected to those wetlands in order for them to be viable. We can't put them anywhere that we want. They need to be agreed upon and designed appropriately. And so, we're proposing 0.8 acre, 0.9 acres of wetland mitigation, which is right at that 1 and 1/2 to 1 for this base zoning layout.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from?
I have some questions. Can you turn the other map around that, please? So, do you intend for these homes to have full basements?
The intention is for full basements, yes.
Have you done any deep hole tests?
We've done several. We will be doing more as the project moves forward to determine elevations of bedrock out there, which we have evidenced that there's plenty of it.
So, approximate depth to rock?
It varies from a foot to five or six feet in some areas. We don't have a full, just the few that we've done so far.
So, did that finding weigh into the decision to put individual ejector pumps in all the homes?
It weighed into it, yes. However, in meeting with town staff, Mark Valentine specifically, the town does not want a global pump station for dedication, so these would be individually homeowner-owned, which does help, obviously, with the depth of any type of sewer. But that was based also on town's preference for what would be dedicated to them.
And at what depth average did you encounter water?
I don't know that we determined any out there. But as we do more deep holes, we will be. Thank you. Thank you.
I have one question, just a clarification. So, for the conventional layout, did you say there's, there would be no variances required?
That's correct. They, each lot meets the minimum size as well as the minimum setbacks. And any that appeared to be non-standard, if you will, from a size or rectangular, we created those plot plans so that you could see where we were in compliance.
Thank you.
For the basements, with such a high level of rock, would you blast for the basements? Or how would you do that?
To answer that, you can't blast for basements, only utilities.
Will there be any blasting on the site?
Yet to be determined. We're at sketch plan. Some of that is going to be dictated by the elevations along the roadway, of course. If the lot numbers change or the configuration changes slightly as we go through design, that road could potentially change a little bit in this middle area, which would affect where that goes. But I would anticipate that, potentially, in some areas, we will. Water main and storm sewer will be run, I mean, water main has to be 5 feet down. Storm will keep as shallow as we possibly can, working for the ponds. And sanitary is just going to be 4 feet down because it's all going to be low-pressure force mains. So, the depth of utilities will be very minimal on this site compared to a typical subdivision.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, man, just one question. DEC will probably be more favorable, you think, for the cluster as opposed to the conventional?
Absolutely. Designs and clusters are very popular for a lot of reasons, but it is a green approach with limited environmental impact compared to the conventional zoning of a larger lot like this.
And Lot 75, what's going to happen to Lot 75? Because that's close to the wetland, right?
On the cluster? It's yet to be determined. That's area that we, is cut off by the stream from the other one and somewhat isolated from the other open space, so we're still determining exactly what that is going to be.
Okay. You'll work with us on that, of course. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to open it up to the audience, and I have Steve Haake.
Good evening. My name is Steve Haake. I live at 1235 Northrop Road, which is actually on the south side of the road, so I'm not directly impacted backing up to this. My concern would be, it's a small two-lane road, no shoulders, no sidewalks. I'd be concerned with the impact of additional traffic from people coming from the south. It seems like it would be a perfect cut-through for somebody going to the Jackson Road entrance. The 70-some houses, I would think that would impact it quite a bit. It's been impacted in the last few years from the other development, the old horse farm off Jackson, and I've seen quite a bit of traffic increase, but that's my big concern with it.
And you're talking on Northrop Road?
On Northrop Road, yes. And that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. I have Linda.
Shreaver.
Yes, yes. That must be it. Come on up. And for the record, please forgive me if I butcher your name. I don't mean to.
Hi, I'm Linda Shreaver. I live at 1420 Jackson Road, which is the property here, backing up to the wetlands. So, that's, my first concern is I see that there's a stormwater management facility, and I understand this is a sketch plan, so there's not a lot of detail there, but if that in any way fed into the stream that comes down through here and then out through the drain.
Can you speak into the mic more? And if you.
Pull that mic closer to you.
Yeah, if you could pull the.
Okay.
Thanks. We were told from downstairs, Command Central, that TV can't hear you.
So, the concern is, where's the water going to go from this facility? If there's asphalt being put in, is there a drainage system going in to manage storm water? Will that feed into the stormwater management facility? If it does, where does that go? Obviously, I'm not interested in having any more water on my land than is already there. So, that's one of the concerns that I have, and hopefully, there'll be more details about that if this goes forward. I did want to say, just for the record, that I've enjoyed the benefits of having that land be wild for as long as it has been, and I'm grateful to the landowners that have owned it and left it that way. I've enjoyed the wildlife, and I've kind of felt like I've had a nice little resort to live on. So, I appreciate this particular design because it does leave a lot of green space, and I enjoy that. If you go with this cluster design, it seems like it's not clear to me what's going to happen to this property right on the corner of Jackson and Plank, and I'd like to know more information about that, if, when, and if that becomes available. I wondered if there would be any access to sewers for the existing homes that are there on Jackson, depending on how they're put in, where they're put in, if that's a possibility. This part of Jackson Road is open to hunting, and I wondered if the town would consider changing the boundaries for hunting so that it would be prohibited in this section that's going to be developed. I've had hunters on both sides, that they come right into the side on the north of me, park right on the side of the road between me and Plank, and go in there and hunt. They come in behind on the Rubino property and hunt in there. Shotguns get pretty loud. I don't think that would be appropriate for a subdivision of this size.
Right.
And the last thing on my list was, I currently have a note from the town saying that it's okay for me to have horses on my property, and I'd like some assurance that that will not be changed if the subdivision goes in.
I have a couple questions for you.
Okay.
Do you have standing water on your property now at any time during the year?
Yes.
Can you describe how much and how deep?
It's not very deep. The stream runs just at the back, let's see, that would be the northeast corner of the back lot of my property. So, that runs just about all year round. It will dry up if we have a dry summer. It's probably no more than 6 inches deep, but the ground stays very soft. I have to wait until way late in the spring before I can drive back there and not make ruts in the yard.
Do you have any water intrusion in your basement?
My sump pump runs all the time. I don't know, I try to keep the water from building up, but.
Do you see any free water or any salt deposits on the walls in your basement?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Hildreth.
My concerns were addressed.
Oh, they're addressed? Thank you.
Good evening. Charlie?
Charles Lumpke, 1226 Northrup Road. And my wife and I just wanted to ask one question, whether there was the intent of the housing to be leaning towards senior housing, or whether it was intended towards general family living, or what the intent of it was. But we do have concerns beyond that question, and it was reiterated earlier by Steve, that certainly the traffic along Northrup Road is going to increase. Our property is roughly here. My wife and I moved here about three and a half years ago, and one of the reasons we selected Northrup Road was because it's a very quiet, very residential, very pleasant place to stay. And we've seen some increase in traffic over the last couple of years, but now we're triply concerned over this appearing in our backyard and having the cut-through traffic that is inevitably going to come along with something like that. So I wanted to go on record as being very much opposed to Penfield considering such a thing as this in totality for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all the pre-signed up slips I have for this application. Would anyone else like to comment on this sketch plan? Yeah, come on up.
My name is Tom Shinowski, and my wife and I live at 1434 Jackson Road. We border this property on both, we're on the west and the north side of the property. Let me point right there.
Okay.
You know, my concern would be wet basements. Our house is located probably on the highest point in that quadrant. When we moved in there, I can remember the conversation with the builder. You know, we were digging the basement in September and October, and he said, "Boy, this is really dry. You're never going to have to worry about a sump pump." And yet, from like March to June, the sump pump ran pretty much, not continuously, but maybe thirty, forty percent of the time. Now, we've corrected it by having, we're on a hill, so we have a gravity drain out of our basement, but my concern would be on the houses that aren't near as high as our house and won't have the option of a gravity drain. What's their sump pump and basement going to be, situation going to be?
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
My name is Jack Freherst. I live at 1486 Jackson Road, which is approximately here, give or take. The concern about groundwater is, you have to experience it to understand. Been in the house for forty-four years. I've had commercial-grade sump pumps, one horsepower, one-third horsepower. Right now, and for the past four months, my sump pump goes every two minutes. It goes into a three-inch pipe, it goes into a six-inch, which goes down my property to the front. It's an unbelievable amount of water there. You're going to have a challenge, in my estimation, particularly up in this area and over here. The water, you have to experience it to try and dissipate that amount of water. I'll bet I've spent $2,500 between sump pumps, water flow systems, a generator, just to dissipate the water. Now, you would say, "Well, what the hell did you move in there for? It's a beautiful home, post-and-beam construction." And to be quite honest with you guys, it was my first home. I didn't know what the hell I was getting into. Would I redo it again? No, I wouldn't. Just want to let you know.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to comment on this sketch plan application? All right, anyone else from the board? Any other comments? Okay, any closing comments, or y'all set?
Unless there's anything specific that you'd like us to discuss.
What'll happen now is, we take all this information in, we issue you a letter. Based on that letter, your client will decide whether they want to pursue it or not with an actual application. All right? Thank you. Zach, if you'd like to read the next application, please.
I'm going to take a minute. I'm going to take a minute and just let this happen. How are you, John?
Good, and you?
Good. Can you hand this down to AJ? It's very important. Hit around the trail.
Grazie.
He's doing it. I thought he was doing it all. Neighbors got to be there for neighbors. It's good, it's a good plan. Did those doors close? Really trying to get that noise down. All right. Application number one for our public hearings this evening. John Gramlich, 1217 Monroe County Line Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Requests under Chapter 250, Articles 11-11.2 and 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary, final subdivision, and site plan approval for one new residential lot and the construction of a new single-family residence with associated site improvements on 22.15 acres located at 1217 Monroe County Line Road. The property is now reformally owned by John and Beverly Gramlich and zoned RA2. Application number 19P-0003, SBL number 096.01-2-13.2. All yours, John.
Okay. Good evening. My name's John.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this hearing.
Okay, duly noted.
Good evening. My name's John Gramlich. My wife Beverly's here, and Bob Kiefer is my civil engineer. Bob's also my neighbor. And so, we're here, we have 22.15 acres at the moment. What we're looking to do, my son and my daughter-in-law are planning on buying the present home at 1217 County Line Road. My wife and I are looking at building a home on the front and to the south of that property. We've so far received comments from the Monroe County Department of Health, Monroe County Department of Planning, Water Authority, and the Penfield Planning Board, and we're working through all those. I guess, I have a couple of things I would like to talk to, to the comments, and then if you want to ask questions after that.
Floor is yours.
All right, thank you. One of the main comments that was made is the desire to have the parcel large. We know it's supposed to be a two-acre parcel by zoning. We're proposing a 1.125 acre parcel, and the town voiced to push the property line back as close to the existing home as possible within fifty feet. Our desire would be not to do that. And we did a survey, so I gave the board a copy of a survey of existing homes. So we surveyed forty houses along County Line Road on both the Wayne County side and the Monroe County side. And of those forty homes, sixty-two and a half percent of those are less than two acres. And seventy-five percent of them have less than 200-foot of frontage. There are only five houses in the town of Penfield on that road, and it's 1.2 miles to the next closest house in the town of Penfield. So we feel that the 1.2 acres is very much in align with what's existing.
In the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood, right? So, and our desire is not to diminish the property value of the existing home further by putting the property line closer to it. So that's why we came up with the size we came up with.
Okay.
That's, I think, there's a couple other comments regarding, you know, the trees that exist on the property. It's a wooded lot. We moved there because it's a wooded lot. Our desire is to keep as many trees as possible when we do this development. So that's the other thing. And then there was another comment that talked about the present swell and moving the house to the north further because the water would continue to go down that swell. That swell is basically, we put it there when we built the house. It's for the sump pump. It has no water in it at the moment, unlike the previous person. Our sump pump does run, but it's an occasional thing, and so that swell carries very little water.
And you could move the swell if you need be?
And we're planning to move the swell. We've also had conversations, one of the other comments was regarding getting permission from the landowner next to us because the swell is going to be very close to that property. The property to the south of us is owned by Ron Wilbert. We did have a verbal conversation with Ron. Ron is fine with us bringing that water over onto the edge of his property, but we haven't done anything in writing yet, waiting for this meeting to see how this goes.
Okay.
That's all I have. And my engineer is here, Bob Kiefer, if you want any other technical questions.
Okay.
I don't have many questions, but one, I just want to verify the number of variances you're going for is two.
Two. So less than 200-foot of frontage, or 167-point-something or other, and less than two acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Nice explanation. Anyone in the audience like to comment on this application?
And the only other thing I would say is, we did give you a petition from neighbors, of the twenty-one neighbors that I contacted, every one of them was in agreement with what we're doing, including all five of the houses that are in Penfield.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Mr. Gramlich, thank you very much for your presentation, and...
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item.
Application number two. BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of 777 Panorama Properties LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Articles 11-11.2, 12-12.2, and 6.6.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary, final subdivision, site plan, and EPod permit approval for the construction of a new roadway with utilities to service development lots for a new business park on 55.3 acres located at 125 Panorama Creek Drive. The property is now reformally owned by 777 Panorama Creek Properties LLC and zoned LI. Application number 19P-0007, SBL number 138.12-1-1.1. All yours, Peter.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Peter Vares from BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of 777 Panorama Property LLC. As Zach read, we are here this evening to request preliminary and final subdivision, site plan, and EPod permit review for the proposed Panorama Park Business Park. Panorama Park will consist, or is on 55.3 acres of land on property that is zoned LI Limited Industrial. The property is located along Panorama Trail South. The property occupies about 350 feet of frontage along Panorama Trail South. It is bound to the north by the Thermo Fisher Industrial Complex, to the west by the Allen's Creek Valley Neighborhood up at the north end, and the Mobile Home Park at the south end. And then its southern boundary is New York State Route 441. The project will have access to both Panorama Creek Drive and also a direct access onto Panorama Trail South. This property actually has been reviewed by the town on several occasions over the past year and a half. Actually, the planning board started with it back in early 2018, if you recall, because there were, this was four separate tax parcels that the developer has collected over the previous several years, and thus, we did a consolidation plan to consolidate those four parcels, which consisted of the former Hilton Hotel sites as we knew them, on Panorama Trail South, the lands of Camp Hackamo here, lands of the EJ Del Monte Corporation along Route 441, and then they acquired lands from here from Thermo Fisher. So those four tax parcels were combined into one tax parcel, which results in the 55.3 acre overall project. This has provided a great opportunity in the fact that it took four individual parcels by four individual owners, brings them under one umbrella, so to speak, one developer, so that they can be looked at holistically, and an overall plan developed for the entire 55.3 acres. This property also was reviewed by the Town Board in 2018, where they issued EPod permits for woodlot and slopes, EPod permits that allowed some limited grading to take place on the property, and that was work that was done through the fall of 2018 and into the winter of 2019. And then finally, we were here before you on January 24th to do a sketch plan review of the development. That's before you this evening. So the proposal is to develop the property as a professional business park, along with commercial and retail uses. The developer sees this as being a flex-type development in that regard, but with all uses conforming to the allowable uses under the LI zoning of the code. The likely commercial development would be along the Panorama Trail frontage to take advantage of that frontage, but there's also the possibility, depending on the users, that that could also be a business park-type use. The projected build-out on this property is 350,000 square feet, which yields around 6,400 square feet per acre. And that actually is a very low number from a business park, office park development standpoint. Usually, the rule of thumb is 10,000 square feet per acre. But we'll get into that, part of the reason why we're at 6,400, which is primary, the site's primary feature, which is its topography. As coming out of the sketch plan review, this plan does propose nine lots to be subdivided into the project. The primary use on these lots will be as professional offices, a mix of one, two, and three-story buildings, depending on the individual lot that's developed, how the design of those buildings will utilize the topography that's there. The, as we mentioned, we see the Panorama Trail frontage possibly being where any commercial or retail development would take place. As currently shown, the lots are proposed in sizes ranging from as small as two acres to as large as 15 acres. But again, individual users at the time of final design may cause for some modification to those lot dimensions based upon their particular needs. At this time, what the developer is looking to do, and it is the crux of the request of the approval, is that they are looking for the necessary site plan approvals and EPod permits that would allow them to construct the office park or the business park's basic infrastructure. And that would include the construction of the proposed roadway network up to the cul-de-sac, as we say, up to the top of the hill. The intent is with that, is then also to do selective clearing and grading of the building pad areas to basically, to frame what the development sites would look like and provide them... them, provide to potential users where the development could take place. Because the fact of the matter out here is, is the site topography that dictates a lot of what occurs. This area up at the southwest corner is at elevation 420, and down to the low areas here, and here is elevation 280. So there's 140 feet of drop south to north across this property. And I'm sure you're all familiar with it as it relates to that being the dominant natural feature. So, between that topography, plus the EPods that exist, the slope EPods, the woodlot EPods, the stream corridor EPods, all of that, that really does dictate how this property will be developed with the individual users. And that is why, at this time, what the developer is looking just to get approval for is just to build the road itself with its infrastructure. We are not proposing individual site plan review or approval for any of these building lots as they're currently shown. Because the fact of the matter is, none of these buildings will be constructed on spec. They will be developed based on an individual user's need. And that actually provides the best use of this property because it will allow the user, based on their specific need, to work their building and their parking and, and design to the topography that exists on the property. We see unique opportunities here to do staggered development where it's using the topography to get two and, and three-story exposures based on, on the topography that's available. So as we discussed with you back at sketch plan review, it is our intent that, once the infrastructure's in, that we would come back for individual lot site plan review, final site plan review and design, where we would shape the individual buildings and their parking to the user's needs and to the site topography itself. The current plan that's before you this evening, as it relates to building this infrastructure and creating the, the rough building pad areas, proposes about 38 acres of disturbance, which is about 70% of the total 55-acre site. But you understand, of that 38 acres, over 15 of it was already developed, being the Hilton Hotel sites up front and obviously the Camp Hackamo lands. So we really are only developing, like that?
The one at the, under the whiteboard?
Whiteboard.
All right.
Oh, good. Thank you. So, so we're really are trying to minimize the amount of development that would be done at this time so that we allow the individual site plan development to dictate truly what needs to be clear and graded. As shown on the EAF that was submitted, this current infrastructure plan only calls for six acres of woods, for instance, to be removed with the development of this. There's currently about 21 acres of woods on this property. To do the infrastructure development, it would take six acres of clearing to get us down to 15 acres. So, in other words, we're not looking to clear more than we need to do at this time to allow the individual building design to dictate ultimately what we do. So the development of the, of the business park itself would include two dedicated roads, Road A and Road B. These are proposed to be dedicated to the town of Penfield. They'd be 24 feet wide with concrete curb. This would provide access to Panorama Creek Drive and thus the signalized intersection at Panorama Creek Drive and Panorama Trail. The direct access to Panorama Trail will be offset from the Vision dealership that's located across the street. And that was reviewed and, I'm going to say dictated by the Monroe County Department of Transportation. The county is the jurisdiction authority of Panorama Trail. It is a county highway. We have met with them on several occasions about the access plan here. And what they are requiring for access and highway improvements as part of this development is the access onto Panorama Trail from the site will consist of a right-out only, but it will allow left turns and right turns in. So in other words, the left turn out of the development onto Panorama Trail will be restricted. And the thought is, they will actually use the access to Panorama Creek Drive and use the signal there to make a left to head north on Panorama Trail. Highway improvements being required by the county is there will be a left turn lane constructed on Panorama Trail to turn left into the development. And that five-lane section, it's currently four lanes, will be continued all the way to the Panorama Creek Drive intersection such that there will now be a dedicated left turn lane into, or onto Panorama Creek Drive. The right turn out from the Panorama Trail access will also now include a dedicated right turn lane from that access all the way to the east, or, excuse me, the westbound Route 441 access ramp. And that has been, as I said, identified by the county in a letter from them from March of 2018 that we have provided to staff. There has been a traffic study prepared for this development based on the 350,000-square-foot build-out. That study works in conjunction with the access plan to show that the intersections will operate satisfactorily. That is currently being reviewed by the county and the state. They had reviewed a previous version of the report that was done in December of 2017. And that, and that has been updated as, as of six weeks ago, based on just making sure it included the Hampton Inn that had just opened. That was one of the big adds we put in there to update it. The traffic study looks at the Panorama Trail corridor from the Penfield Road intersection down at Home Depot in Bill Gray's through the 441 access. They did not require that we went as far south as Washington Street, but that study has been done per a scope that was prepared or identified by both the county and the state. And that study has been provided to the town staff also. So it is on file here at Town Hall. The highway improvement plans also have been prepared, have been submitted to the county and state, and they're currently under review for permit process. And those plans have also been provided to the town and they're on file at Town Hall. So in addition to the access, we will put in the basic site utility infrastructure that would be constructed along the proposed dedicated street. That will include public water. The developer will install the water system, dedicate it to the Monroe County Water Authority. There are two connection points proposed for that water system. It will connect to an existing water main in this area here of the former Hilton Hotel site. And then it will come up through and it will connect to an existing water authority water main down on the former Camp Hackamo lands, but it does create a loop through there. There's ample pressure in the supply system that's been provided to us by information from the Water Authority. Public sanitary sewer would be provided. The developer will install that. It will be installed completely along the Road A, called a street, and ties in here to an existing sanitary sewer along Road B. That existing sewer goes under Panorama Trail South and enters the Pure Waters Interceptor Sewer that's along Arondecoy Creek. One of the big design features of this project is a comprehensive stormwater management plan, a plan that's been prepared for the New York State DEC Stormwater Design Manual and per the town of Penfield's requirements. As you can see on this rendering, there are two stormwater facilities proposed. One is in the southeast corner of the property. It's actually an expansion of the existing facility that was constructed with the Hilton Development when that property was initially developed. We're expanding that facility for two reasons. One is to allow additional runoff from up the hill to enter that stormwater pond, but also it is to bring it into compliance with the current regulations, which is from the water quality treatment aspect. The other facility is located up at the northwest corner of the property, and that will receive the runoff from the remainder of the property here. Again, those facilities have been designed by, per the state DEC requirements to address both, both water quality and water quantity treatment requirements. That, and that leads us then into our discussion of EPods. One of the things we've been sensitive with this design throughout is the Allen's Creek Valley Neighborhood that's up in the northwest corner of the property, or to, our neighbor to the northwest, I guess we'll call it. That area has floodplain. It has a stream corridor EPod. There's federal wetlands here. All of those areas are being avoided with this development. Those areas, combined with locating the stormwater pond, will provide a natural buffer of, of a minimum of 150 feet, and in some instances over 200 feet, between any development that'll occur on this property to the Allen's Creek Valley Neighborhood. As we mentioned, there are woodlot EPods on this property. Right now, this plan proposes a reduction in the woodlots from 21.9 acres to 15.8 acres. Again, that's primarily to do the grading up in this area. One of the things we did do, and it's noted on the plans, we did do a survey of the larger diameter trees that are up there. Those have been individually located. They're noted on the plans. And as, at this stage of the game, as it relates to this, I'm going to use the term, the generic preparation of the infrastructure, those trees are, are designated to be saved so that, depending on building design and whatnot, that hopefully they can be worked around. But at least, we're not going to get premature, get ahead of ourselves and take them down now until we know exactly what we're doing there. There are, as I mentioned, there's federal wetlands up in the northwest corner, so there is a wetland EPod. We are avoiding that. There is a stream corridor EPod in this area here. We've applied that 75-foot EPod to the centerline. We are avoiding any encroachment into that. And that in and of itself lends itself to providing a buffer on the property. There are slope EPods throughout the property. Those are designated on the plans. We are proposing some disturbance to those slope EPods at this time to create some of the building pad areas. But where that disturbance is occurring is into the center of the site, which I'll get to in a few moments as to why we've approached it in that regard. But the key with the slope EPods is that we have been sure to apply the necessary provisions of the EPod ordinance as it relates to erosion control, stormwater management, and revegetation so that, to minimize the impact to those EPods. The last EPod that does exist, there is a floodplain EPod on the property located here, and then there's a small portion of it here. We're not proposing any disturbance up in the northwest corner, as I've mentioned. The small disturbance here is off of the current Thermo Fisher parking lot, so that we will provide the compensatory storage for that disturbance. And that's going to be done in the vicinity of the Camp Hackamo Pond. As part of our application, we did provide the written responses to the, the factors of considerations for those EPod permits. The last thing we want to talk about as it relates to the layout here, we will be submitting an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're actually going to submit it tomorrow to appear at their April 18th meeting. And that is because we are requesting setback relief from the LI ordinance as it relates to this proposed development. The setbacks that we're requesting is the LI code requires a 100-foot front setback. And as the code defines that, they define the front as any part of a lot that fronts a public street. So in this case, we have Road A, we have Panorama Trail South, and we have Route 441. So in this instance, we have at times three front setbacks that we're dealing with. We are requesting that that front setback is reduced to 50 feet. And primarily, we want to do that onto the proposed dedicated street because all of this setback relief is all about getting the property developed into the areas that are suitable for development, utilizing the, the lands that Camp Hackamo previously developed. For instance, up in this area here is where the former ball field was. If you get up on that site, there's plateaus throughout. So what we did in preparing this layout is we really identified the plateaus first, said, and there was an old hall road. That's where this proposed road. It follows that alignment. We identified where those plateaus were and said, okay, what are the setbacks that would be required to allow the development to occur here versus putting in a 100-foot setback throughout and pushing everything back off the road. We've just felt that this was a better approach as it, because it minimizes the encroachment into the EPods. So we're requesting a 50-foot front setback onto the internal dedicated street. We don't see that being detrimental to the neighborhood or anything like that because the neighborhood is its own neighborhood. A 50-foot setback to Road A only affects the building across the street that hopefully would also have a 50-foot front setback. As it relates to 441 and Panorama Trail, you can see on this aerial, those, both those highways have very large right-of-ways, such that reducing that setback to 50 feet does not affect the character or anything as it relates to along 441 or Panorama Trail. So again, it, we believe that allows us to, to cite the buildings and the development lots into the appropriate areas of the site. The other setback relief we're looking for is here, which is along the west property line at the south end. We're looking to reduce that to 100 feet from the 150-feet buffer that's required from the LI zone to a residential zone property. We're doing that, again, because of how these plateaus lay out on the topography. But what's important with that 100 feet that remains is there is slope EPods in there, and there is extensive vegetation there that will form a very natural buffer between the development and the residential zone property to the west. But we also, because of the EPods in that area, we are not seeking any reduction at that area. We will provide the 150-foot required buffer between the LI zone and the residential zoning to the northwest. The EPods themselves, I'm going to use the term, require that 150-foot just to happen anyways. And actually, the closest the development gets is in this area here, which is 150 feet. That building that's shown as a graphic representation is actually 200 feet off the property line. So we're going to be able to provide more than the 150-foot buffer to that residential zone in the northwest. So just to wrap things up on this, we have, in our application, we did provide written responses to the memo from this board as a result of the January 24 sketch plan approval. We didn't discuss any of that this evening. Because of the scope and scale of this project, it is a Type 1 action under SEAKER. We did provide you the full EAF, Part 1 completed, along with an engineer's report. The engineer's report and the traffic report provides the supplemental information to support the EAF as it was prepared. As a housekeeping item, we would request the town, or the, the town planning board to be able to designate themselves lead agency and initiate a coordinated review of the application. The EAF and the, and the engineer's report and everything was based on a 350,000-square-foot build-out. So, water use, stormwater runoff calculations, traffic generation, all that was based on that 350,000-square-foot number. We did receive the PRC report from March 1st and have submitted written responses at the first part of this week to those. It is our intent that we would provide updated plans for those comments once we, I'm going to say, complete this appearance this evening and get the board's input, plus any other public comment, just in case there's other revisions or questions raised, that we do that all at once and then submit an updated set of plans. So with that, I'm, I myself, and there is the representatives from the developer here this evening, we can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. I just have a few questions for you.
Sure.
What types of commercial development do you see happening along Panorama Trail? Could you go into that just briefly?
It, it could be anything from a restaurant. It could be a retail use. It's, part of that is getting through this process so they know what they're able to market. But on the other hand, it could be the function, if they had a user come in that says, I'd like to locate a, their, their office building right along Panorama Trail. They, they would not rule that out. We're only suggesting the, the possibility that that's where any commercial type use would go, just because of the logicalness of being along Panorama Trail. You know, you have Popeyes here too. But it's, they don't have an identified tenant yet, and that's, we've just shown a representative layout of how it could happen, but that would be somewhat tenant-driven. As I said, they don't intend to build anything on spec out here. So when we would come back for final site plan review of that, it would be for specific tenants where, so there'd be architectural plans and, and the actual knowledge of the actual square footage and the demands and everything.
Okay. Okay. Do you currently have interested customers, people who want to locate there?
I can say there has been some interest expressed as it relates to office users, especially going up to the top of the hill. But again, for the developer standpoint, it is a little difficult for them because they can't get ahead of themselves because of, you know, of not knowing when they can deliver a building, per se.
Sure.
But they have gained some momentum from, as a result of the EPod permits that the town board issued that allowed them to be able to get some prospective tenants up there to look around. And that's also the need for getting through this process of getting the road in because then that really then opens up the potential. But the development team, the developers' team, they have a lot of experience in this as to doing these parks, and usually it's once the infrastructure's in, now they've got a hard product to market and definitely can then turn around of delivery time because it's all based on when can they deliver a building.
So to speak to that, do you have an idea of an overall timeline for a full buildout they're anticipating?
The full buildout of the entire park of the 350,000 square feet will be completely market-driven as in, because it could be, it could be a user that comes in there and wants to do a corporate campus, or it could be individual buildings. But I don't think that they themselves know. I mean, what we did based on input from them as part of the buildout, as we projected through some of the engineering report information, the traffic studies, we projected three to five years.
Okay. And then my last question is regarding the woods. You said that six acres would be cleared now for the roadway out of 21 total. What do you anticipate out of the balance of that staying woods?
I, what we, it's, I'd say, so going from the 21 acres to the 15 acres, I would say of that 15 acres, a good majority of it will remain, and that's primarily because of the topography. The slope EPods that were not disturbing are, they're pretty dynamic slopes. I just point to that area for there. On that rendering, it looks like, okay, there's an area that's, you know, hundred and, couple hundred feet wide with some trees on it. How do you know they're going to stay there? I'm pretty sure they're going to stay there because there's actually 100 feet of elevation difference from here to here. That's how steep the slope is. So it's just not going to be changed. So it's really the slopes with the vegetation on it that will dictate. That's why these perimeters will stay, too. It's the EPods are actually going to protect the woodlot EPod in that regard, the other EPods, the stream corridor, the slope EPods, those things. So.
I lied about that being my last question. Pedestrian access, sidewalks, trails, that sort of thing, so that somebody working at the top of the hill wants to go to lunch in that commercial district at the bottom, can they walk without getting killed by traffic on the road?
So that was a comment that came up in the PRC report also. We have had the discussion with the developers, and they are willing to consider providing a sidewalk along one side of the road that would allow the users, I guess, the tenants to be able to move. And even if it's just to walk for the sake of exercise, yes. So that is something that they are willing to consider.
Okay. Other board members?
Another question. The residential area that borders it, what would you envision their view would be of that project with the proposed two-to-three-story buildings?
In both areas, Bob, or?
Yes.
Okay. So in this area here, the vegetation that will remain is tall, too. So it will screen it. Now, during the winter, you're going to be able to see through it and whatnot, but the separation and the elevation difference, this area actually sits below this, so they won't be seeing the full view of the buildings. Down in the northwest corner, one of the things we'll provide is, that's been asked, is doing a cross-section through here.
Right.
So we will provide that as part of our PRC response with the updated plans of, what we anticipate there is that's going to be a two-story building is likely what that would be. The zoning, it should be noted, the zoning does allow six stories within the LI zone, but it is no, there's no intent to build a six-story building here. I think that the highest would be three-story, and that would be something that would utilize a lower plateau to do it. But we will provide that section.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter, you anticipate having any landscaping per to building these, you know, the pads and that cul-de-sac area?
That's a, that's a great question in the fact that what we're proposing is that the landscaping will be done on an individual lot-by-lot basis so that we know where their parking layout is, where their access to the dedicated road is, what the building design is. So there would be individual landscape packages done at that time because, again, this all being, this being kind of just a picture to show how we, how it could be developed until we know actually how the individual lots would be developed, we would want to do the landscaping at that time. Because part of that would be also what existing vegetation we can retain and work from.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So you're asking the board for approval to build the roadways and the infrastructure?
Correct.
With a conceptual idea for the location and the size of the building pads. Is that correct?
I'm going to say no. And the reason why, Jim, is really what, how we see this is it's more of, we're requesting the approval to develop the site infrastructure. But what this plan was prepared for was in response to the sketch plan review saying, well, but how could this lay out? But on the other hand, and we've worked with this development team on several projects, is a user could come in and take, for instance, here. That shows, I think, two 30,000-square-foot buildings. A user could come in and say, I want to be at the top of the hill, and I'm going to do a 55,000-square-foot building. This now becomes one building with its parking and whatnot, and we may have to dissolve a lot line to do it. That's very common in this type of process. Because if you remember at the sketch plan review, really what we gave you was just the subdivision. We didn't show any buildings or parking lots because we said, because we don't know what they'll be. But we know from the experience of the developers that lots, you know, as long as they've got two acres or so, they've got lots they know they can market. But the individual user will identify ultimately what they need. This was provided at a request of this board and the PRC of going, can you at least give us a picture of what this would look like? One of the examples, I guess I can use, and we've used this a couple times, is if you were to pull the original Linden Oaks plans, those plans were just the road infrastructure with lots. There were no buildings and parking because, again, they didn't know exactly how the individual lots would develop, but they knew they needed to clear back a certain area, get the infrastructure in, and then let, then design the building and parking to the user's needs and whatnot. But, so that's why I kind of answered no. Because if you were to ask me, will this, this is what it looks like five years from now, I couldn't tell you that it will.
So I'm going to take your answer as a yes. It is conceptual with respect to the proposed building pads?
Yes.
And the approximate size. You've got an aggregate area?
Yes.
Of occupied space?
Yes.
That you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. So you intend to come back to the board each time you want to develop a pad site?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'd like to hear your idea for how we take this significant environmentally impacted site, this difficult site, and revisit all of the elements that are germane to the site at large on a building-by-building basis. And I just want to expand that a little bit.
Sure.
You talked about the engineer's report?
Yeah.
Which we can't open. It's 168 megabytes. So I'm going to ask Zach to ask you to zip that file so we can open it up and look. But for instance, we know that there's a big delta in elevation between the entryway and the back of the site. You mentioned that there's lots of pressure in the water main. Well, that pressure's going to drop pretty significantly as we go back and then two- and three-story buildings. Does the engineer's report factor in whether any of these buildings will be required to have sprinkler systems? And if so, are we talking about a site-wide fire pump? And if so, is that something you're asking for the town to take dedication? Or are you looking at a private fire main system if that's the case? So, you know, and some of these things that end up being determined after you receive initial permission to develop the site with the infrastructure based on a certain number of factors can change. So, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm asking out loud whether or not you've considered, you know, how much effort this might require on your part each time you come back for a pad site.
Okay. So the short answer to that is yes. Okay? But I'll explain. Because there was thought put into this, how we've approached this. And it is an approach we have used on several other instances with this development team, and it has been successful. The goal, what the developer's goal is through this application process that we're in today is, the best way I could put it, is that they would have a project that, the buzzword being is that they have shovel-ready sites. Okay? Such that the infrastructure is in place and the overall SEAKER process has been completed such that when it is time to develop any one of these lots, they would be able to come in, and it would be a single-step process to obtain site plan approval for what is going to occur on that specific lot. And as I mentioned in response to AJ's comments, so that would be a site plan application per the town's site plan criteria, the checklist, the architectural information, final grading, all of that. But how do we get there through this process? I can tell you, the engineer's report and the EAF, that is the point of identifying what is the potential maximum buildout that the developer envisions here. So everything was prepared based on 350,000 square feet of buildout. For instance, the traffic study was based on 350,000 square feet of office space, or 250,000 office, 100,000 commercial retail. The traffic study was based on that. The storm water management plan was based on 65% impervious cover of the 55 acres because that's the maximum allowed by code. Now, will we get there? No, we won't, but that's the most conservative approach. Water supply was based on a demand of 350,000 square feet of office space. What is that demand typically being? To go off on a small tangent, the pressures that are there, and that is documented in the engineer's report, shows that because of the elevation drop, we pick up, this, we all know where we are here in the valley here. This is a highly, this water supply system has very high pressure today. It only picks up as you move south to north through this property. There's ample pressure there to supply two- and three-story buildings, and you'll see that in the calculations. So there's not going to be any need for a booster pump station on the water system. The water system will be dedicated to the water authority. Those conversations have already been had. I highly doubt there would likely be a need for any fire booster pumps in the building, but if they are, those would be private to the building. If anything, there may be a need for some pressure-reducing valves, to be honest with you. But that's, you know, that pressure information is in the engineer's report. But the approach we're going to take here that we've had success with and we've reviewed with staff is that with the SEAKER process and the information in that EAF as it relates to setting the bar at 350 is, so that when you come in with that first lot and say, for instance, and say, we're going to have a user that's 50,000 square feet of office. Well, based on that user, you're going to know what their trip generation is. You're going to know their water demand. We're going to be able to count their lot coverage and runoff. That becomes compared to what you reviewed under SEAKER. And you just basically keep, I'll use traffic as the best example. You just keep running a running tally because the traffic study based on 350,000 square feet has based on a certain trip generation. And you just keep adding up the trips as development occurs, and as long as you stay under those thresholds, you're in compliance with the SEAKER findings. So you taught, yes, there is a lot of effort from our end to basically do a complete preparation of a report and documents to show how 350,000 square feet, how potential impacts from that type of development can be mitigated through the design, through the storm water management plan, through the application of the requirements of the EPod permits, through the highway improvement plans along Panorama Trail. That's all based on 350,000 square feet occurring here. And as long as we stay under those thresholds, this board has SEAKER behind them, so to speak. And as long as the use complies with the code, we have that behind us. Now, obviously, if we come in with a completely use that needs a conditional use permit or is a high-traffic generator, yeah, then we know we have to reopen that. And we've had these initial discussions with staff as to how this approach occurs. And as I said, and we have used it before in other communities, and it does work well. And the goal is, is that's how you create a shovel-ready business park. Because the key to this type of development that I know Mr. LaFroy could get up and talk about is be, oh, hi.
He moved.
Yes, is being able to tell a tenant that I can deliver a building in a certain amount of time. That's why they're willing to put the effort, the time, the money in at this stage because at the end of the day, it's being able to deliver. Rich, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I'll have to give you a break.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Peter. I just have one question on the architecture of the buildings. I know we've talked a lot about the size and the timing, and they may go from one to, from two to one buildings. But what's the architecture going to be like? I mean, if I'm driving down 441 on Panorama Trail, am I going to see brick and glass? Am I going to see a lodge? Or am I going to see a collection of eclectic buildings?
I'll try to answer. You want to, I'll let Rich answer this.
You know, we're going to have a series of different users.
Do you mind introducing yourself and your address and anything for the record?
Rich LaFroyce, 990 Lake Road, Webster, New York.
Thank you.
We're going to have a series of different users here. But our, what we've tried to do in all our industrial parks is keep a theme up. So, you know, again, the architecture may change a little, but they're all in the brownish tones. They're all in, you know, some sort of glass. And our goal here is to have a high-end buildout, very, I hate to compare, but very similar to Linden Oaks across the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If I, what I was just mentioning to Mr. LaFroy, what I'd recommend, one of his office parks is Calkins Road Office Park. It's between Calkins Road and Lehigh Station Road. If you get right off the Lehigh Station Road exit at 390, take a right, take a right. That's his, that's his park that has, how many buildings, Rich?
Probably have 15 buildings.
But 15 buildings that he's developed over the years. But that, but you'll go in there, you'll see that there's architectural continuity between the buildings that he, as he said, he establishes a theme. And you'll see it is brick and glass with concrete elements and stuff like that. So if you want to get an idea, that would be someplace we'd recommend you to go take a look at.
All right. Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? All right. We'll begin, thank you for your presentation. Chuck Lewis. Come on down.
I'm Chuck Lewis, 56 Waterview Circle, which is right there. What is an EPod?
Environmental Protection Overlay District.
Okay. And I, I-
I was wondering if somebody was going to ask that question because I'm thinking, I bet a lot of people don't know what that means. I bet a lot of people don't know what that means.
Yeah. To me, it was an iPad, but whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I wonder, are all of these buildings to be rented, or would they be sold? Would there be individual ownerships?
Sure, you can answer that.
Okay. That will depend. The development team has built to own where the lot and the buildings are owned, but they've also, you know, will hold long-term leases also. It's, will be the tenants' decision.
So, it could be either.
Okay.
And this is probably very premature, but our concern, I think, is with things like traffic noise, lighting, et cetera. We would like to think that maybe we could restrict the garbage pickup until after eight in the morning, even building construction until some reasonable time in the day, and that no light, parking lot lighting would be focused toward our residential area. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Next would be Mrs. Shattuck? Is it Marilyn?
Marlene.
Marlene? Sorry. Come on up.
My name is Marlene Shattuck. I live at 59 Winding Creek Lane in Allen's Creek Valley. I guess that I am concerned about the aspect of that there is potential for three to five years of similar noise that I've been enduring since the beginning of this project started. It's wintertime now, everything has been closed up, but the beeping and the noise of the engines, motors of the equipment is, it gets, I find myself going out more, just to find a quiet space, even with windows closed. The other thing I want to know about is, it's my understanding from hearing things tonight, that each time a new building is going to be, started to be built, that you folks will be having a meeting to go over the specifications of this new addition?
That's correct.
Okay. One other thing that I've been sitting there and just getting really uptight about, this map is fine for all you folks who know how to read them. I heard one footage of something that is 100 feet now is going to be reduced to 50 feet from the Allen's Creek Valley property. Pardon? Yes.
You can explain it to me.
Sure, you can, you can.
Okay. The proposed setback that you're referencing from 100 to 50 is what the applicant was explaining as a front setback for buildings to a road. So, if you look at that road they're proposing, that limited, the limited industrial zoning district requires 100-foot front setback of the buildings to the, a public roadway. And as a dedicated road is what they're proposing there, the code says the building has to be 100 feet from that internal road. By asking for a reduction in the setback from 100 to 50, that brings the building closer to the internal road and further from the property boundaries. So, further from the adjacent uses of both the, your neighborhood, the mobile homes, and as well as the Route 441 right-of-way as well. They are proposing to comply with the zoning requirements to be a minimum of 150 feet from the property line that is adjacent to the, your neighborhood.
150?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what that plan is representing right there. At one point, they did state that the, I'll call it a kidney bean shape of parking that you see there that has the curvature on it in the middle, the edge of that pavement is 150 feet from the property line. The large yellow building to the right of it is 200 feet away from the property line, again, closest to the Allen's Creek neighborhood.
So, then, according to that, it's likely that we won't have a building directly at that border? It'll most likely be parking lot?
Correct. The closest thing to, can you clarify what you mean by border? The property border or the 150-foot dimension?
The property border.
Okay. The closest thing to the property border would be in this, again, this is a...
Conceptual.
A conceptual layout, but with that being said, the parking in the building would still comply with that minimum distance of 150 from the property, from the property border. So, from the backyards and all the properties as part of Allen's Creek neighborhood, if you were to go 150 feet from the property line limit into this site, once you hit 150 feet, that's where you see your first area of improvement of a parking lot or a building. There may be some clearing that has to be done for grading and landscaping, but as they said, there'd be some revegetation along the way for things that come out. A final landscape plan would come in to revegetate those things and then to continue and enhance the buffer once something is built there.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. Okay, Bill Shea.
I live at 65 Water View Circle in Allen's Creek Valley, which is, let's see, right about here.
To the right, to the right.
Right here?
Yeah, right here.
Right in here. Our property backs up to Allen's Creek. It's probably 45 feet from the creek. And right behind us is this, I think they referred to it as a federal wetlands area, which is down in this corner over in here, right in here. Okay. And then, also, there's this property line here. There's a creek that runs down through here. I think it's a creek, I'm not sure if it's, is it a creek or stormwater or...
It's a creek.
It's a creek. And that comes into Allen's Creek right behind us. And before it hits Allen's Creek, it splits in half. It's not very big, it's maybe five, six feet, maybe it's wider up above a bit. And it's very steep, as you probably know, coming down from the trailer park. It was very steep over on this side. There's been some grading done with putting the road in and the rest of it. But before it hits the creek, maybe 75 feet before that, it splits in half. Parts of it goes around, kinda curls around, goes into a pond, not a very big pond, and it's got these shelves in it and, you know, plantings and so forth, and a lot of wildlife hanging there, a lot of ducks particularly. The other part of it splits off, goes to the right, comes into the creek. They both kinda trickle down in over some rocks. Since last fall and since the earth has been moved up there, on a number of occasions, the water running in there is running dark brown. You can see there's soil coming in. It was never ran, it ran clear before. It never ran with mud or dirt into it. I took some pictures over the last month on two occasions, and you can clearly see from the pictures, the mud coming down through that creek valley. And so, something must have been disturbed up in there during the putting of the road in. So, I'd just like to bring to the board, to whoever we have to point out to, if you could look into this and see the proper erosion controls being taken, and if you'd like to look at the pictures, be glad to share them with you.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Did I pronounce that right?
You got it.
All right.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Sandholsner, 57 Water View Circle, Allen's Creek Valley. Just a couple of comments and endorsement from the board. I'm president of the Board of the HOA at Allen's Creek Valley. Marlene has mentioned some things, and so has Bill, and some others, and I have spoken to you before. But obviously, we have a real concern, because this is a major development on our border, 55 acres is a major development by any standards. One of the things that I was concerned about, and I kind of think that Peter addressed it, was, I was concerned about the density of the property. We're going from one to three stories. Seemingly, you know, I'm concerned about just the magnitude of the activity that's going on there. But seemingly, the topography and the parking demands, and hopefully, the seeker approvals have dictated that the density cannot get any greater than what would be reasonable. The environmental situation is obvious. We are concerned about, what I would consider environmental would be lighting, noise, pollution of the stream. That's really important to us. Obviously, we have the creek in our name. We live on two beautiful creeks, and it's very important that we maintain the sanctity of those. The other thing is, is the start time of the grading that still, I think, needs to be done. I think there was a mention that there's another six acres of woods that are going to be developed in the near term. It would be really nice if we could get some kind of a relief on the start time. Last time it was 7:00 a.m., and there were some issues about whether or not it was even before that, but I won't get into that, except that it would be nice if we could get even 7:30. Eight o'clock would be better. 10 o'clock would be even better, because we all tend to sleep in a bit, you know, in our development, but I won't speak for the entire development in that regard. But anyways, I think that covers it. I think that you just need to know that we're obviously very, very diligent and vigilant about this development as far as our quality of life is concerned. Thanks.
Excuse me, sir?
Thanks.
Yes. Just, for the record, when we last met about this project...
Yeah.
You had indicated that the design team and the development team had been gracious in providing your board with information.
Yes.
And I just wanna ask you if they're continuing to communicate and give you a voice in this process.
I haven't really, you know, we've, we've kind of, we've maintained, you know, a presence here during the approval processes. Peter and Dutch and his team came last year sometime to talk about the initial development plans. I think that, I know that we've got, Peter, his reputation is well-founded. We have good communication with the town, Jim Costello and company, and you folks. So, you know, I'm just feeling that all we would like to do is for you to just keep us in mind as you go through these things, because we know it's fait accompli, the whole development's gonna happen, and we're just looking to get as much buffer in every way that we can from some of the issues. But overall, I think we're doing pretty well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Jim, if I could just add to that, 'cause how we've been handling it is really, 'cause staff's been doing a good job. If they don't have something to respond to a comment, they'll reach out to us, whether it's a copy of a letter or something, and we turn around. So, we're kinda using the town, I think both entities are using the town as a conduit of communication.
I really asked that question for the benefit of those people in the audience that perhaps weren't here last time.
Sure.
So that they could see that there is a good level of communication between the development team and some of the neighbors.
Yeah. So, and as he said, as the developers, Lefroy and Mr. Summers, you know, they, yeah, they can respond to any questions. Okay?
Okay. Would anyone else like to comment on this application? Okay, you raise your hand first, come on up.
My name is David Pearlman. I live at 62 Winding Creek. And something was very interesting to me, just listening to the presentation, a number of things, like, for example, I heard that we wouldn't probably cut large trees at this time, or we wouldn't do this because by implication it would be not sensible to do it. It trusts us to be logical, and it makes me uncomfortable. If the developers are confident that it really wouldn't be realistic to do something, then they shouldn't object to actually writing a commitment not to do it ever. It makes me feel a lot more comfortable then. There are certain things which obviously they would not do. Also, I heard that there might be a restaurant, for example, on this property. Suppose the restaurant had a patio, an outdoor patio, and in the summertime, they put a rock band out there. Are there any protections against loud noise, for example, or bright spotlighting on poles for that restaurant, something of that sort? Maybe, in my ignorance, I don't know what rules you're operating under here. And I've heard phrases like, "We do not anticipate at this time," and that worries me, "at this time." I think that putting time restrictions in certain places is important. I would like very much to see people from both sides of this issue get together and take things which are vague and make commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name's Tony Maraz. I live at 11 Sky Ridge, also in Allen's Creek Valley. I'm as far away as you can get from that project, so... But my worry is the other people around, the more parking lots you put in there, the more water runoff you're gonna have. And they say they're gonna take care of it, but it doesn't take a lot extra into Allen's Creek to make a big difference. And like Panorama Plaza and those apartments across the road there, they get flooded about every third year as it is. So, there's gonna be a lot of people unhappy if they misjudge how big their catch patients are. Those 100-year storms are coming around every other year now. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. Did you wanna come up? You can, you can lower, yeah.
I'm De Ma Stella. I live at 58 Winding Creek Lane, which is right across the street from where we hear a lot of the noise that's already going on. And I just wonder, what time are you starting your work, sir?
Sure, you, okay. Currently, what they're doing is they're abiding by what's allowed under the code, which is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Those are the allowed work hours by the town code.
Well, we start hearing it at 7:00 a.m., and we're old and retired and like to sleep in. So, I just wonder about that, because it is, it is an ever-growing problem. At first, there wasn't much going on, and now it's just sort of a consistent noise. And it would be appreciated if it were a little bit later in the morning, if that's possible. I don't wanna make a big stink about it, but I think my neighbor next door and I can, are two of the closest ones to this whole process. And, I mean, we can walk across the street and go down in a muddy valley and climb up and see what's going on. And I don't do that very often, but just to see. Anyway, I just wanted that comment, because it isn't, it can only get worse. The noise can only get worse as the development goes on, and that's really not comfortable.
Okay. Thank you. Sir?
John Garrett, 53, Sky Ridge Drive. Just a quick question. I believe that they said that code allows a six-story building. Is there any way to limit that? Is there any way to limit that? To be less than six-story?
It's a good question. You know, they haven't come in with any proposed six-story buildings. Technically, I guess they...
So, you'll deal with it site by site?
Most likely, yes. Anyone else have comments on this? Any other board members' comments? All set? Okay. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And we'll call this hearing close. And I'd like to take maybe a five-minute recess while you folks can clear out from this hearing and stretch your legs. We'll reconvene at 8:50.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Once again, a very nice...
Next application. DSB Engineers, 2394 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14626. On behalf of Redstone Builders, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2, 12-12.2, and 6.6.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield, for preliminary final subdivision, site plan, and EPod permit approval for a 13-lot, single-family residential subdivision under Town Law 278 with associated site improvements on a 10.19-acre property located at 1725 Scribner Road. The property is now formerly owned by RB Land Company, LLC, and Zoned R120. Application number 19P-0004, SBL number 124.05-1-1. All yours, Walt.
Very good. Thank you, Zach. I'm Walt Baker with DSB Engineers and Architects. With me tonight is Mr. Steve Philippone. He's the owner of the property, the developer, as well as the home builder. As you mentioned, it's RB Land Company, so. The maps I posted on the board are the ones that we submitted with the application. I also brought a rendering of the site area. As you can see, we tried to highlight the areas that are going to be retained in the darker green area. We do have the 13 lots. We're doing a 278, which is a cluster development versus a conventional lot for 13 lots. We do label on the map, we have a lot number 14, but it's really not a lot. It's based on the town staff requires that we dedicate a strip of land where the retention pond will be. They want to have full ownership of that. So, when you go to the county to file a map, you can't just have a piece of land without a number on it. They want a number. So, we do have 13 lots for the development. Like I mentioned, it's a 278 plan. The lots vary in size from 75 feet in width up to 110 and 115 over here. The lots to the south, north being that direction, to the south, this lot is actually 3.7 acres, which is this area that includes this back portion here. Like we mentioned at the conceptual meeting, it's approximately three acres, a little more than three acres of that will remain in the darker green area. It'll be not disturbed. Mr. Philippone's going to have a deed restriction on that lot. It'll still be lot number 13, but it will have a deed restriction on it, so the rear part of the property will not be able to be developed, clear-cut. There'll be restrictions on it, no future subdivision of it. So, it'll all be in the deed for lot number 13. Lot number 12, again, we took lot number 12, which is also this area here, and subdivided what we're calling lot 14 for the retention facility off of that. So, we do have dedicated roads. There'll be public water. Monroe County Water Authority, public sewers. Standard residential subdivision requirements are going to be met. We did receive comments from the town staff, from the PRC, and we'll address those with the final approval plans. They're minor in nature, a couple of things, inverts and stuff like that, and notation that we have to add to the plan. Basically, that's about the size of it. Now, if you have any questions?
Okay. Jim, you want to start off?
Yeah, so, when we last discussed this project, we talked about some concerns of the neighbors to the north.
Right.
And some buffering.
Right.
And to the west as well. So, could you describe to the board what the developer is willing to do in those areas to minimize the visual impact?
Right. Well, that's why we tried to illustrate how the darker green is going to be maintained. So, as you can see, the site's 10 acres, and approximately, almost four and a half acres will be undisturbed. The area down at the front, so off of Scribner Road, except for the road entrance, it's going to be basically the vegetation you see there today. We do have to have some drainage improvements along here, because the adjacent property next to us, they do have an area, which we discussed with the town staff, that's poor drainage, so we'll make sure we have a drainage pipe for that and a swale for them.
So, specifically on the north end where the turnaround is, how much vegetation, and you're showing in the dark green there?
Right.
How much vegetation that could act as a visual buffer will remain there?
It's approximately 20 feet, 20 to 25 feet. We actually made these two lots deeper, or wider, I should say. It's 115 feet, and this one's 110 feet, so we could maintain that area. We discussed that at the conceptual meeting.
And could you describe what that vegetation looks like that you're intending to leave undisturbed?
Everything that's there today, all the existing trees and the natural vegetation, so we won't disturb it.
Okay.
So, and obviously, when people buy houses, they embellish it and add their own trees and screening.
That was the only concern that I had.
Sure.
Steven?
Name and address for the record.
Steve Philippone, president of Redstone Builders, also the owner of RB Land Company. One of the things from looking at the rendering that Mr. Baker's put up here, and this is the first time I've seen it, but we could probably take some of those trees, where you've got two trees on each of these small lots, we can take one tree from each of the lots, and we can use it for putting it towards the end of the road, and maybe along, behind lots, you know, three, four, and five, in order to kind of give a more year-round screening, whether those be Colorado blue spruce or some other species of evergreen.
Okay.
Basically, the town code requires two trees per lot in the front yard. What he's suggesting is to relocate one of those trees from the front yard to the end of the street and try to enhance the buffer there.
Okay. Thank you. How about the west side?
Along the western boundary?
Yeah, describe along, yeah, and really where the houses and the disturbance is going to be. What's going to remain from, you know, the back of the disturbed area over to...
The western boundary line?
Yes.
Right.
Well, and between you and the next neighborhood.
Right.
Forest Park subdivision.
Right. Well, if you recall, this is actually town-owned land through here. There's a drainage swale that goes down through there. The rear setback is 20 feet for the 278. So, obviously, we don't build all the way to the back property line anyways. So, that 20 feet will remain in its natural condition.
So, you'll have 20 feet on, let's say, your property?
Correct.
Of undisturbed?
Right.
And then the town land is, what is it, 100 feet wide? What's...
It varies.
70 feet?
It varies through here. It dips down a little bit. Yeah, but that's all, well, there's a drainage swell. There's trees in there, but mostly, it's a drainage swell that goes down through there.
Would you consider moving some of the, you know, changing the lot line of 13 and 14 so that more of that undisturbed area is in the land that's dedicated to the town versus a homeowner's lot and with a deed restriction?
Could you explain that again?
Well, it just seems to me strange that if lot, was it 14, has the stormwater management facility, and that's dedicated to the town?
Right.
And lot 13 is this huge lot that is deed restricted to not ever develop?
Right.
Why not make lot 13 smaller and put a lot of that land into lot 14? Is there, I mean, I guess we could check with the staff as to...
That's more of a question for us, I think, because we did, when we met with them at the PRC meetings, that was an item that came up, was how much of the land, residual land, would be dedicated to the town? Would it simply be for the stormwater management facility or the residual land? And town staff felt it was better to only take dedication of the stormwater management area, mainly because for us to, if something happens with the wooded area that's back in this area, yes, it's adjacent to town-owned lands, but if something happens in this back area, it's kind of difficult to access a little bit, and we don't want to own more trees than we need to in town, is the honest answer. It was proposed during the meetings that the residual land would stay with lot 13, be deed-restricted. One other element or tool you have in the toolbox is the use of conservation easements to preserve that land as well. But the town was not, was only supportive of taking ownership of the stormwater management facility, because that's what we need to service, is that area. So, I hope I helped your answer there.
Yeah, it does. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, this town area, this is actually an acre in size with the flag that comes into it. That's an acre in itself. So, like I mentioned, this is 3.7, so the rear part of the property, that's another three acres plus... I'm being conservative when I say about four and a half acres is going to remain undisturbed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay. I'd like to open it up to the audience, and I think I have an Andrea Davidson. Andrew, I'm sorry. You didn't look like an Andrea.
So did I say. At least he butchered his name.
I butchered the first name.
I butchered it because I couldn't write. Andrew Davidson, 20 Fallbrook Circle, Rochester, New York. So, I guess my only concern or question that I had was, there was a lot of talk in our last meeting about it was going to be geared towards seniors and single level and that kind of thing. I looked last night for a long period of time. I didn't know if there was an ordinance or a way that the town could mandate that that, all 13 of these were for 55 and older. That's my only question.
Okay.
Because there was a lot of talk about taxes and, you know, families not being in there and that driving revenue, that kind of thing.
Do you want to answer that one? Sure. I don't know if it, yeah, go ahead.
Your hunch is correct. We don't have a way to restrict age within the zoning district there. It's, the market is up to the developer, similar to the style of the home as well, as long as it's a residential setting. We don't restrict anything beyond that in terms of who occupies the house and how the house looks.
Okay. Thanks.
Chances are, I think, very good that there won't be, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah, I'm not saying I disagree or agree with you. The only thing is, is that, looking from my point of view, you're right across the street from a school. So, I know there was a lot of talk about it being geared towards that way. If I'm looking for a house to walk my kids to school, that's prime real estate. That's all.
As you asked the question, Mr. Philippone was shaking his head, yes, that's still the plan for the market.
Yeah. It's plan and what actually happens are two different things. Okay. Thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else like to comment on this? Yes, come on up.
My name's Holly Snow. I'm from 22 Fallbrook Circle. I know kind of every time I get up here, my points are the same, but living behind this development and buying my house six years ago and being told that I was buying on a lot that backed up to forever wildland, that I would never have a building going back there, was part of the reason I selected the house I did. So, I feel like I would be doing my family a disservice if I didn't continue to say that I have large concerns with this and that I feel that I was duped into kind of the situation that I have right now. I also have large concerns, because I do have two young children and thinking of new neighbors that I wasn't necessarily expecting. I have concerns about the traffic that this will continue to cause in an area that already has a lot of high traffic. I think about trying to take a left out of Fallbrook and Tree Brook in the morning is already not that realistic. Adding more cars to this just seems to be causing more problems. I also do have an issue with a development going right in front of the school where I plan on sending my children. I am concerned about the disruption to wildlife. For me, the, there actually isn't going to be necessarily a house behind me now, but now there's going to be a retention pond. I have, you know, concerns about that, obviously, with children once again, and with what that retention pond will potentially hold in terms of attracting different types of wildlife and also bugs, insects, and things of that nature. I still am kind of struggling to understand the actual size of the pond and whether it's a retention or detention pond, and kind of just getting a better understanding of that. I also just have concerns about the loss of aesthetics for my property. I came in understanding a certain value associated with my house because of it backing up to looking at trees, and I don't know if that's always going to be the case now. And then, just again, the concerns about drainage. You know, I'm another one of those people that says my sump pump is running 24/7. I just think any disruption to this area back there is going to affect water throughout our neighborhood, and I'm concerned that it will affect my basement. So, those are just my thoughts and my points. I know there's minimal that can be done, but I just feel I need to continue to voice my concerns with this development.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else? Yes, sir? Come on up.
Hi. Tim Andrus, 6 Treetop. First one is, I would ask that we never go behind the Panorama Trail Group again. That was terrible. The second thing is, I was trying to find out, how big is this little green swatch at top and bottom? Is that six feet or 10 feet or 25 feet of, not 20 feet? So, it's 20 feet here, and the building is going to be setback from that 20 feet by how far?
It depends. Sorry to say. I'm sorry.
How far is the, how far is the building from the lot line?
So, typically, the branch structures that we build, similar to what we did at our, as I mentioned, the Timberland development before, can range from anywhere from 40 to 60 feet deep, you know, from garage to maybe a rear-covered porch or something like that. So, that being said, oh, and the width of them typically runs about 60, maybe 65 feet wide. So, in this location here from the side setback, you said this was 115-foot wide lot?
110.
110. So, you're talking about depth?
Depth.
So, front setback, where I think we established is a minimum of 35 feet. So, this would be 35 and then 790. So, there'd be about 90 feet of depth between the setback and the house. So, that would leave remaining...
70 feet?
70 feet to the rear.
70 feet plus the 20?
Yeah.
Okay.
Including the 20.
Including the 20. Okay, so 20 is actually part of the owner's lot?
Yes.
It's just not developed?
Correct.
Okay. And for future development, is that developable by the...
Hey, guys, I'm sorry. I need you to get around the microphone or something, because this doesn't help.
Is that, is the part that's greened out, can the owner develop that? The dark green, is that within the purview of the owner to develop?
Everyone looking at me? I don't mind, I don't mind answering.
When you say develop, do you mean like a shed or something like that?
Sure. Well, I mean, can they put a, you know, 65-foot patio and go all the way back to the lot line? I mean, or is that dedicated to...
No, that's different.
No, not without a zoning variance or something.
That type of development is restricted based on setbacks. So, patios, pools, sheds, those things are restricted to the setbacks of the residential zoning district. Was part of your question just the amount of, like, tree removal too, or are you just looking at, like, the physical improvements to the property?
Physical improvements, but I mean, I guess at the end of the day, if there would be some way that that little green thing could be a six-foot-high berm, I don't know if I could speak for any of the other neighbors, but jeez, while you're in preconstruction, I'd pay to put up a whole row of arborvitae's or something up there just to get a buffer. But if this is at grade and they can just go bushwhack it out... But if, if this is at grade and they can just go bushwhack it out and just keep on pressing all the way to the woods, that's a whole different gig. You know, so I'm, I'm just trying to get as much, as much stuff here.
With respect to the buffer that everyone's talking about, the board can review that as part of the overall grading and kind of sometimes a landscape plan depending on how the project evolves. Again, as proposed, they're indicating twenty feet of undisturbed area. And then, again, there is that strip of town land between the properties that exist and the site, which, based on that map, is probably a good seventy-five, eighty feet at least. It varies, obviously, depending on which property you have. But it does, there is a town-owned land strip there that has the ditch and is vegetated now. But that is something the board would look at, is what remains and what buffer, if necessary, would be applied.
Okay. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I understand we had a ton buffer, but like, like she said, I bought in many years ago assuming that this was forever wild was...
That's not a term we live by.
I, I now understand that. I was unaware of that. But in trying to keep it as natural and pristine as we could, as much as I can block, you know, our house from theirs and then they don't have to look at the riffraff living behind them, which is us, and that would be good.
Just taking shots at yourself there.
Yeah, I was. But no, if there's any way to get a buffer that, you know, berm buffer, trees, whatever, in, in that little twenty-foot strip, because if it's now eight feet high by sixteen feet wide, they would have to grade that all out to, to make something else there, and it just puts more, more space. That's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Melissa Brown. I live at seventeen forty-three Scribner Road. I just have a few questions and comments. Is there only one road in and out for this, one road in and out? And I would also like to know the green area buffer, exactly like how much area that pertains to. And the, when I was here before, we talked about the road being public or private, and I didn't, I would like to know which is the case? If anybody knows that?
I believe it's a dedicated...
Proposed as a public road.
Public road.
Public, so the town will be taking care of the road?
Correct. When they said a dedicated road, that's what they were referring to.
And was there any more? Did anybody, was it looked into again about the water? Because there is a creek that runs through the property itself. And when it's, it's a lot of rain and stuff, it, it swells a lot. And I just was wondering if that's going to be preserved for the creek to run freely and stuff like that.
I can answer it while you're up there if you want. Portion of the creek, they're going to have to put a large pipe over it where the road crosses through, and then the rest of it will be preserved from your aspect to the left, to the south of the site, which is why they've clustered it to the north, to preserve the natural flow of that creek. Part of this will also include some cleaning within that area because you just, as part of this site, any site work in town, whenever you propose development, you cannot negatively impact your adjacent property owners from stormwater runoff. Any runoff generated from the site must be treated on the site, which is the reason for the retention, for the stormwater facility that's shown there in blue. And all that, all that system, that drainage system between the creek and that pond area will be reviewed by the town engineer as part of this development to make sure that no negative impacts are taken as a result of the development.
Okay. And I just wanted to know if they could clarify how large of, what is the footage this green area represents all the way around? That would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Could anyone else like to comment?
Ron Reed, sixteen eighty-nine Scribner Road. So I'm the neighbor to the north. I guess, first question, and this is different than the last time we were here in front of the planning board. I thought the, the cluster home concept was, was dismissed or was done away with. We were looking at the conventional homes, which had the thirteen half-acre lots running down the, the strip. So can you address that for a minute, if you don't mind?
Well, the developers proposing the two seventy-eight cluster...
So that's not a done deal yet. It's still just a proposal and...
Correct. The whole thing is a proposal. It's, it's, it's beyond sketch plan. They're asking for approval of this, but they would like us to approve the cluster development versus the conventional plan.
Can I add something, AJ?
Sure.
I think there could have been some mix-up there if you're referring back to the board's previous meeting about this. When the board reviews a cluster plan, they have to review the conventional plan at the same time to establish lot density for the project. In order to do that, they have to accept a conventional plan that's proposed by a developer. So at the sketch plan, a conventional plan was drawn up. It was designed as how would this be built under conventional zoning? The board reviewed that in its work session following the public hearing and accepted the layout of the conventional plan to establish the thirteen lot density for the cluster subdivision. The board was supportive of the cluster subdivision, but in order to do that, the conventional plan that you referred to had to be discussed and accepted first. So that was a, a means to this in the, in the name of preserving over half, well, approximately, a little less than half the land.
Okay. Sorry, I was just under the impression that any development in this part of town was part of the R one twenty, which I think requires at least half-acre lot size, which these obviously aren't.
Under conventional zoning, yes, but under Town Law two seventy-eight, which is mandated by the state of New York, you're allowed to cluster...
Okay, so you have, as a town entity, you have to give them that option or...
If they propose that option, the board can, can accept that route. I mean, there's, in rare cases, a conventional plan may be a better layout. But typically, when you cluster, it's a benefit, there's a benefit to the project in the surrounding area rather than developing the entire parcel of land.
Okay. I guess I've got personal feelings because it's in my backyard now, but that aside, thank you. I have concerns with the road. The, the map over here shows a turnaround that isn't shown on the colored map, and I wondered if you could address that for a moment?
It'll, yeah, the turnaround will stop short of the, of the property line. So that area will be vegetated. We'll put arborvitae's, so it'll be, it'll be screened.
Okay, so the, the map or the, the drawing shows ten foot...
Right, yeah. Yeah, they, the guy that drew this kind of, that should be green at the end of that. This turnaround here?
Okay, that, that's still only ten feet where, before you were saying twenty plus.
We had twenty right through here.
And...
Right, we'll vegetate the whole thing anyway.
But the turnaround will be there?
Correct.
And that's what snow plows will use?
It's required by the code for a dedicated road.
Right.
Okay. So my other concern is, snow plow, public plow coming down there, are they going to just push snow onto my property? Or do they stop and use that turnaround to, to, to deal with whatever snow they have to remove?
They'll likely keep it within the turnaround area.
Okay.
Depends on how much snow.
Understood. Again, I, I'm just concerned with it being pushed into, into my yard.
I'll, I'll expand on it. With the buffer they're talking about, if something is planted there as a replacement, then obviously our plow operators are not going to intentionally push over something that was planted just to move the snow. If they have to stop short or push it to the side, I mean, a lot of the snow that falls off the plow is usually going off to the side anyways with the wind, so, but yes, it's something that would be addressed.
So, okay. Another comment regarding the existing vegetation and stuff will be left in place to, to act as that, that buffer. I'm not sure if you've walked that property, and I certainly haven't walked the whole property, but the, the land close to me is filled with quite a few box elder trees, trees that are very weak and weren't well-maintained. And you go back there now, and with the recent wind, there, there's a lot of trees split apart and not looking very pretty back there. I'm assuming all that's going to be removed, and in my opinion, that won't leave much to act as, as a buffer, especially on the north end where, again, where my concern is. I guess it's, it's my opinion for that buffer to, to really happen, you're going to have to put in some money and do some planting in there. And again, I assume there's going to be a landscape plan that, that's part of this come, come final approval. Again, I just want to voice my concerns on, on that regard.
So if I may, we, we heard your concerns during the, the sketch plan application, and that's why we're asking the applicant to provide, to provide some additional buffer there.
Sure. Sidewalks weren't addressed in, in any of the talks so far today. There is a sidewalk that goes to the school crosswalk. Not knowing what kind of demographic is going to move in here, assuming there'll be some children, how do they get from, from the development across the street to the, to the school? Any thoughts on that?
It's a question we will certainly ask them. I was actually going to follow up before this public hearing closes about what they plan to do with sidewalks. We're on the same page.
Very good. Let's see. Any plans for streetlights in the development? And I'm not sure what the town requires in that regard.
The town only requires a light at the intersection with Scribner.
So we'll get one right there?
Correct. To illuminate the intersection.
Okay. An acronym kind of question. You threw out PRC earlier. What's a PRC meeting?
PRC is us. It's the Project Review Committee that is assembled with town staff.
Very good.
We assist with all the boards that do site, uh, site review and generate comments that are technical and planning-related for the developer to consider and for the board to consider as well.
Okay. Stormwater issues, and again, here, the, the drawing, the technical drawing shows proposed storm sewer drainage easements. And does that just mean the swale that's back there already and, and drainage going into, into the retention pond? Or will those, will their storm sewers be tied into some other storm sewer system?
I'll let them ask, ask that question. Answer that.
Now, we're going to have a...
Walt, can you try and use the microphone more, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're not draining anything off the site. The drainage in the backyards will have a swale in the back and inlet on either side that goes out to a storm system at the road. And then from the road, it'll continue down into the pond. So it'll have catch basins along the road with gutters.
So no storm sewer grates and that sort of thing.
In the backyard, you mean?
No, in, at the street.
Oh, it's normal catch basins, yeah, that you find along the road.
Again, but it all leads to the, to the pond.
Right. It all drains to the pond. The whole street will drain. Yeah, there's catch basins here, there's catch basins here, and at the end. And then there's a storm inlet in the backyards over in this area here, and the drainage will take it into the pond.
So just for your benefit and, and some of the other people here, new developments aren't permitted to discharge stormwater onto adjacent property, period. They have to show the board and prove to the town engineer that all of the stormwater that discharges from impervious surfaces and from the roofs and from roof leaders is maintained on the site. So I, we, we understand that there's a concern here, but, you know, that drainage swale that's on town property that already exists should not be impacted at all by this development.
Okay. Now, there was talk in the last meeting too about the town taking responsibility and doing some work on that drainage or that swale.
Those are two slightly different topics. I recall discussing that during the meeting. As I was discussing with the chairman earlier in this conversation, it's proposed that the stormwater management facility shown on the map would be dedicated to the town for future maintenance and ownership. With regards to the swale that exists today, the town has its own drainage cleaning schedule for that, and I believe one of the neighbors, I think you asked me actually, when was the last time it was cleaned? And on average, we look at, it's, it's, sometimes it's as needed, other times it was, I'm sorry? Uh, other times it's on like a thirty-year basis. It depends on when the last time it was cleaned. So we have an inventory of all these things that are going on, and we have a schedule that goes out every year with our drainage crews to address areas of town. So we get on a schedule of making sure the ditches are cleaning and functioning as designed. So two separate things, but I can see where there's a lot of water being discussed.
Yes, for obvious, obvious reasons. I think one other question, just a detail regarding the, the survey that had been, a survey has been done on this property. So that was a question, and nodding your head, yes, thank you. I'm curious, were there, were pins marked and were the corners, were landmarks put in place?
The surveyor, I don't believe he said actual iron pins, but there were stakes, you may have seen them, that were wooden stakes that were put along the various points in the property, particularly by your property. I don't know if they're still there or not.
So no, I didn't see wooden stakes. I saw some fluorescent tape tied to trees and things like that, but nothing that indicated the point. And my one concern is, there's a, a bit of a squiggle line in there. I'm wondering if that, that represents the, the stone wall that's along the, the north property line? Do you know? Only because if it is, then I take exception to the survey because my survey, when I purchased the property, says that the stone wall is, is on my property, and I want it...
I'm not sure that that's the stone wall or not, but...
And that's just a nitpick detail that caught my eye. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir?
Hey, my name is Tony Audi. I live at fourteen Fallbrook, which is right there, the closest one. So I have a handful of questions first and then a request. First questions are around, let's go back to the water. I just want to cover this a little bit more. So it was, it was stated earlier that the current creek will not be impacted other than a, something going over the top of it for the road. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're not going to change the path?
Correct.
Okay. Is the retention, what do you call this? What is this?
It's a stormwater management facility. I have to confirm if it's a retention or detention. I don't know it off the top of my head.
So is the stormwater retention facility going to be in any way tied into the creek?
I believe, I believe that, yes, it's discharged into it at obviously a restricted rate.
Yeah, it's whatever. Okay, so that's how it's going to, I just was curious how the water was going to leave there. That made perfect sense. Has anybody from the town confirmed that the existing swale, which I believe has been stated is...
Right there?
Yep.
On town-owned. Has anybody confirmed that that's where it actually is?
Yes.
You, you've confirmed that?
Yes.
Okay, because I know when the swale was originally cut, it was cut in the wrong location, and then they had to come back and cut it again.
That's probably why.
Okay. Let's see. I'm an engineer at heart. I, I really want to understand, you don't have to explain it to me now, but we can take it offline, how the heck a snow plow is going to navigate the end of that? Because snow plows have enough difficulty navigating arc cul de sex, which I think works pretty well, but I just, like, it doesn't bother me because it's not my house, so I don't really care. But I'm just really curious how, how they're going to handle that. We can take that offline.
Okay.
So here's my request, right? So, you know, existing neighbors don't want a neighborhood behind them, whatever. Person buys the land, they have the right to put up houses, sell them. I get that. It's, I'm a realist about this. So here is my request. My specific request to the town is that you take really good care in terms of establishing what that green border is going to look like. The reason I'm going to say that is because my house is right there, so I'm probably one of the closest to it other than the people over on, on Scribner Road. I know what's behind my house. There's the end of my lot, a bunch of scrub stuff that really provides no visual barrier whatsoever, a swale, which clearly provides no visual barrier. On the other side of the swale, there's scrub stuff, trees, whatever. Quite frankly, I realize that they're going to cut, they're going to clear cut right to the edge of the lot. I'm fine with that. I'm totally fine with that. Tim wants a berm. I don't think a berm is realistic. What I would really like to see is a proposal that includes something greater than six foot or eight foot high evergreen vegetation all the way around. I don't know if that's realistic or not. I don't know if that's realistic or not, but that, to me, would be a nice compromise that would give us and the people who are buying these houses a nice visual barrier between us and the neighbors behind us. So that's what I'm looking for. I don't know if you can mandate that or negotiate it or whatever, but that's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on this application? Okay, anybody from the board?
Well, yeah, before we leave it, can you address sidewalks, please?
Actually, we're gonna have a sidewalk. I believe the discussions we had with the staff was to have the sidewalk along the front edge of the property, along Scribner.
And on the internal streets? Or you're going for a waiver from the town board?
We'd go to the town board for a waiver.
One of the two.
Right.
Right? And they can choose to grant or deny?
Correct.
Right. So your intent is to go for a waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do the frontage on Scribner, so it'll benefit the school, some, I mean, until something gets added to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and we'll call this, this hearing closed.
Thank you.
We're still here for the next one. Now we got Crown Point now.
Where you going?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're not done yet. All right, we have one last application for the night. Seems like it's clearing out. We'll move on to it. Application number four, DSB Engineers, 2394 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14626, on behalf of Redstone Builders, Inc. Request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2, 12-12.2, and 6.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for final subdivision, site plan, and EPoD permit approval for seven single-family residential homes with associated site improvements on 11.12 acres located at 899 Plank Road, to be known as Crown Point Subdivision, Section 4. The properties now are formerly owned by Plank Road Development, LLC, and zoned R120. Application number 19P-0005, SBL number 094.18-1-6.001. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Walt Baker with DSB Engineers and Architects. With me tonight is Mr. Steve Philaphone, the owner of Plank Road Development. As the board will recall, this would be Section 4. North of us, which is on the key map, is the bulk of Crown Point Development, which is Section 1, 2, and 3. He's just about ready to start construction on Phase 3B, which will complete all that area north of this piece. This is, this, in fact, this 11 acres received preliminary overall approval with the project back in...
2004.
I was gonna say 6, 2004?
2006.
Yeah, 2006, roughly. It was approved for, actually, a cul-de-sac, and it had 13 lots.
2006.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. So it used to, it had a cul-de-sac with 13 lots. R1, well, it was 278 plan, this is R115 zoning, but it was a 278 approval as well. Stephen decided he'd like to reduce the density to seven lots instead of 13, and widen the lots out. So the lots now are 120 feet minimum in width, and obviously the same depth. We kept the same road alignment. We removed the cul-de-sac, and we stubbed the road to the south for future extension. If you're familiar with the area, Christine Circle comes down and ends in a cul-de-sac, but there's another road over in this area here that is actually stubbed. It's got radiuses, and it's stubbed north, and we align that with that for future extension to connect the road and make a loop road, so it'll come through. But he wishes to go with seven lots instead of 13. Basically, it'll be a public road. Same thing with utilities. We do have a stormwater facility to take care of the increased runoff. It'll be public sewers, public water, storm system, and basically the seven lots versus 13.
Okay.
Yeah, I had one question on the PRC comments. There was one point, the pound ownership and access, has that been addressed or resolved?
We showed it under an easement, proposed drainage easement to the town, and the access of the storm, the sanitary is gonna come through this easement here, which is a 20-foot wide easement. We also had another 20-foot easement on the other side, which would be access to that.
Okay, yeah, I saw the easements, but I didn't, yeah, I wasn't clear on the ownership of that, but that answers that, so.
It'd be, yeah, it'd be property line and the property line would go down the center, so it'd be an easement over that unless the town wants us to dedicate that, like, similar to what we did over at Scribner.
I don't speak for those individuals.
Yeah, we can take that up with the town engineer, but either way, whether it be an easement or a dedicated strip of land.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? You in the back?
Hearing none.
Any final comments based on public feedback? All right, thank you for coming, nice presentation. We'll call this hearing closed.
Yeah. Make it quick, man.
And...
Ends on a high note.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, just, why old Gus won't, is that the same kid technician that prepares the plan for the other?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll finish this up.
All right, what do you want to start with? Or go easiest to hardest, or hardest to easiest?
I guess I have a question.
I also have to recuse two people at some point, or one person at some point.
Yeah. I don't know how much into the weeds we can really get with a lot of these with...
All right, I will, let me just guide you through what could be best.
Yeah, let's go.
All right. Jim, if you don't mind, I want to do the TYLAN application first. So if you don't mind, we have to recuse Jim for this. Nope, not that one.
No, 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 not that one. That one's already done.
So what I will talk about first is the 2012-17 Monroe County Line Road application for a single-family home on one lot. Obviously, the applicant made a very good presentation for the board. The only thing they really have left is a zoning board appearance for lot width and lot size in that district. It's a two-acre zoning district, and they provided some very valuable data that I think the zoning board will appreciate. In terms of PRC, we only had technical comments for them, as he discussed. So with that being said, staff has provided a draft approval resolution, basically a conditional approval for the project you could act on tonight.
They sent the zoning boards.
Pending the zoning board decision, I believe it's next week, actually. So if there, I'll open it for conversation, but if there isn't any, we have an EAF and a resolution for you to act on if you choose so.
Is it appropriate to, if you wanted to approve, I'm not saying we will, but if you wanted to approve tonight, in the past, we've waited until they've gone to the zoning board, and we've also approved additionally based on the zoning board.
But we gave you both options in anticipation, so to the latter, we've prepared for that today. If you would like to see how the zoning board pans out, you can do that, too.
Couple weeks.
My opinion is we don't wait for the zoning board. We condition the approval.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a straightforward, he's done his homework, so.
Let's move it.
I do approve the EAF.
Let me just rewind, Mike, I have to correct me. I forgot that we didn't do a, we did not have to issue a PRC memo because the comments were so minimal, it was all just communication to the engineer. Thank you.
Well, no, actually, let's re, well, yeah, they haven't responded to our PRC comments.
However, they were technical in nature.
Wow, which I agree, they were all technical in nature, but I'm just...
There's a lot of memos.
Right, there was a lot of memos, so.
Back to your conversation, but thank you for pointing that out, because I missed it.
Do we condition it on the response to the PRC end zone board in the past, and we assume they were gonna answer satisfactorily, you know? It was too to the title.
We've done approvals with, you know, comments to be submitted to the town, you know, 'cause it's all subject to the town engineer's review anyways with those technical comments. So it wouldn't be unheard of for you to issue the conditional approval tonight.
Engineering comfortable with that?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so EAF?
Move to approve the EAF.
I'll second.
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
With the condition...
With the condition that they get the approval from ZVA.
And the...
Response to the PRC comments, yeah. I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm gonna go with the other easy one, and just...
Come on back, Mr. Kenauer?
Oh.
Or I mean, Mr. Burton?
I didn't know if that was a joke.
He's the one with the beard.
Sort of.
Oh, dear God.
I ain't even saying you can't see it anymore.
In the sake of time, and freshness in our brains, we'll do Crown Point, Section 4. Thoughts? Ideas, conversation? They recapped it again, this overall seeker, all of that was done in 2006 with the whole subdivision access.
I'm fine with it. I mean, I don't know why we're doing against it unless there's some, are there things that we need to wait for with you guys and staff? That's fine.
That, I will say, so what I would recommend tonight, because I was gonna bring that up, the PRC memo was issued for this, there are some concerns still with the pond by town staff. However, given the nature of the application, the reduction of 13 to 7, I think it would be appropriate for the board, correct me if I'm wrong, to direct staff to begin preparing an approval resolution for this project. And then we'll see what the responses are from the applicant regarding that drainage area in the back.
Yeah, Burton, you wanna tell you what?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, Kenauer and Tidings, I almost wrote Burton, this is not good.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right, above bouncing around in my head, you wanna go to Scribner or, yeah, let's do Scribner, why not?
Let me go backwards, that's fine.
I'm just forward, backward, side to side. 1725 Scribner, it was the fourth item on the agenda tonight for the 13-lot clustered subdivision. Didn't hear any over-alarming thoughts from the board. I think one valid one was the discussion of sidewalks and the buffering and elements.
The hammerhead at the end is a little bit, you know, the drawing is rendering were not exactly what I wanted to, they were a little vague.
A little vague.
That's why we have this, that's why we have this.
So what I was, what I was trying to get Walt to say on the record was how thick the vegetation was beyond the hammerhead, so that we could establish whether or not it would provide...
Enough buffer.
Yeah. And the idea of taking the trees that are required by town code to be on the lot, two trees per lot in the front yard.
In the back, that's, I'm not crazy about that.
Well, he wants to put one now in each front yard and transfer a few to the end of the hammerhead. I think if we're, we've never done this before, if we ask for a buffer, the buffer is in addition to...
Correct.
Town code for requirements for lot improvements.
So now that actually could be a consideration for the cluster.
Well, could be a condition of...
A condition, you know...
And the other thing is, you know...
Because honestly, there's, I mean, I do like the idea of a cluster over conventional plan, but there really needs, we need to find that there's a community benefit to that.
And the way that the stormwater works on this site, it makes a whole lot of sense to leave the undisturbed area to the south end of the site.
Oh, for sure.
But the other thing that they're talking about is that they instantly want to go in and get a sidewalk waiver.
Yeah.
Given the fact that, I don't care if he's looking at 55 and over anyhow, half of those people babysit full-time.
Right.
It's right across from a public elementary school. I think they need to have sidewalks, I think we need to make that a condition.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Can you elaborate on that, or are you supportive of one or two sides internal? Code requires, code requires two internal, there's obviously a history in the town where we have relieved it to one internal.
And we do that routinely, but they want to eliminate them altogether internal? I think, I think they need one.
We should support one side per...
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be on the inside of the circle, not the outside, it's less sidewalk they got.
And, and, you know, enough people have asked in these two meetings, Zach, about a crosswalk.
There, we have a crosswalk on Scribner, but there's a gap in the sidewalk from this development to that sidewalk. So I think that's something we have to look at with the town board as part of this development is perhaps this area moves up on the list in terms of when sidewalks get implemented in this area within the right of way.
Well, again, we could make that a condition and have him, have him construct the sidewalks to complete the improvements.
Yeah.
I can check on that. I can check on it, 'cause usually that's, sometimes it's tied to the center zoning projects. I haven't, in my history, seen it as part of a 278, because it's usually tied to the internal, but I would love to look into it to know if it's a possibility.
I'd like to know whether it's within the board's right to make that a condition.
Certainly.
And then what about the actual striping of the crosswalk?
I don't know if you want to go down there, because first of all, the school's gotta already have a school safety, got, got another crosswalk, he's there to cross already at the other one, which is, I don't think it's that far to begin with, and with traffic, as bad as it is, do you really want to put a crosswalk there?
You actually have a lot.
Yeah.
I don't, Doug, can you measure it, just 'cause we're talking about it?
I mean, do they, does the school want to be responsible to hire two, you know, crossing guards now for that?
Just doing GIs.
That's what I was doing, you said.
Just for sake of argument, you're a grandfather that lives in this new subdivision, and
your kids want to go across the street on a Sunday and use the parry ground, you know, the gym equipment.
Which is down near that other crosswalk.
Yeah.
It's down on that side of the school.
So do you want to take your chance that you're gonna take a couple of toddlers across without a crosswalk?
Well, you shouldn't. You want to jeopardize your grandkids.
And you know there's just too many humans in the world to not consider that, 'cause it's a reality.
Well, and we've also heard from people that live in this area that when school's not in session, traffic is...
So where's you gonna go, then there's no other entrance? So now you can, if you put a crosswalk from this entrance across the road, it's, there's not a crosswalk into the school property anyways. It's all grass, except the entrances for the school buses, which is just right there, and then there's one way up, half the other way there.
I see.
And there's, there's no way, I mean, they have to cut across the grass and stuff anyways.
So you have the closest...
I bow to the chief.
The closest crosswalk is there, it is, it has push buttons to indicate, flashing beacons to indicate the sidewalk is there. Correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause you two live in the area. There's a crossing guard there in the mornings, or they got rid, okay, that's still in effect.
No, they got rid of the crossing guard when they did the flashing beacons.
Then they did away with the crossing guard. Then they did away with the crossing guard, I don't travel that way, so I don't know to be honest with you, but that crosswalk is in, it's under the, the county went through that process to get that installed. The site that we're talking about, oop, go back to that one, yeah. There's the crosswalk, there's the corner of the site, um, so, Jim, to your point, I would really like to look into it on staff's side as to, if there's anything that can be done to create this connection as part of this project. If not, then that does fall to the town board and our sidewalk implementation, uh, program for what goes out.
Schedule and stuff.
Yep, whatever goes out to get constructed each year, it could be, I don't know if it would be on, depending on the process for this project, it would likely be sometime next year or the year after. Depending on it, because I, I think we all agree it's an, an important connection, uh, for this project. No doubt about it, even if it is a fifty-five and over, a senior oriented, uh, market.
Senior people do more walking than probably any other age group.
Mm-hmm, I, I can see a lot, a lot of people trying to cross that road and to even use the school as just a nice loop. So, we will look into that, uh, to the earlier comment, I think if you, we can request a landscape plan from the applicant enhancing what is shown, uh, while preserving the two street trees per lot.
Because otherwise, he'd need, he'd need a variance from town code to reduce the, the minimum number of new trees per lot.
Correct, he would go to the town board to relieve it from the front yard if he would, cause there are instances, Windsor Ridge is an example, where we had one tree in the front, one in the back. Timber Glen, a develop, the developer's previous app, uh, project in town, similar situation where the trees were located from the front to the back. Um, not unheard of, but, uh, if this board is supportive of remaining with the street trees as they are while enhancing the buffer, um, that is something they have to.
I'm not crazy about the way they're placed right now, too close together. Um, you know, ultimately, you put street trees in there and you have a nice tree line, that's, that's why we did it way back when, was, so we ultimately have nice tree-lined streets.
There's logistics behind that though, and where they placed them was, is you have to have all the utilities that go to the house, so you got your water service, you got a storm lateral, and you got a sanitary lateral. Which are generally, the wa, the water authority wants the water line at the center of the house. And so then you have to have a ten-foot spacing from the water line either side in order to have your sanitary and storm. So now, that's why they're pushing the trees towards the property corners, is because of, we also require ten-foot separation between all utilities for routes to get into the.
Are we still running a storm lateral on all these single-family lots, Mike?
Yes, some pump has to be tied into the storm.
The sun, but not the leaders.
No, cause the DEC wants to give.
So, why do I see, you know, other places, new developments, it has, they keep mature trees and they, they maintain this really nice environment. In our town, we can never see, it's always seemed to be clear-cut, and. It's like this impossible problem. That I don't understand why, I mean, it's, I under, I guess I understand what you're saying, but why?
I think one thing that goes into that.
Nobody can figure out a better way?
One thing that goes into that, cause.
And other people seem to have figured out a better way?
We, true, I can use Greece as an example, if, to have it local, we have a tree crew that manages the trees that are within the right-of-way if something happens. Not their, how pretty they look, but if something happens, we have a response team in effect for that. In Penfield, we don't have that, we don't have that option, we don't have the manpower, which is why these trees originally, they used to start in the right-of-way. And it would still affect what Mike was talking about with their location, but they were used to be in the right-of-way, which would have brought more of that street line, the, the tree-lined street that you're referring to. And spaced them out more as they were in the right-of-way. Cause we've run into so many issues with whose tree is it, cause we require it to be put in, but then we don't maintain it because we don't have the ability to as a town. Um, they've moved them to the pro, into the property, and then what runs, what happened, ends up happening is, property owner doesn't even like it, and they yank it because they had the ability to. Um, I, I agree with you, AJ, it's, it's a tough situation and, and preserving trees is, has become tough here, I think because of the species of trees that dominate the area. And the age of them in a lot of these infill projects.
We're talking about a cluster development, so there's not a lot of available space on these little lots.
Even tighter.
When you have conventional lots, you can.
You know, I'm talking about this, but almost every other development that we ever do, it just, it's like, okay, well, like, cut everything down. And it's a big open field, and it just takes away the character of the.
Well, we've had some of those, we got that one on Creek Street.
Maintain the rubber.
On the east side?
Capstone.
That was pretty well clear-cut.
Huh?
That was pretty clear-cut.
They maintained a fifty-foot buffer on some of them.
In the back of the lot.
They spent a lot.
In the back of the lot, mostly, yeah.
They spent a lot of money cleaning up dead wood and.
Scrap and.
Yeah.
Scrap and brush.
So, we're gonna get into this conversation when we talk about Panorama.
Similar. Similar deal, different deal.
You're in the residential element of it, if I am correct in assuming that, versus the commercial side of it?
Alright, so how are we gonna move this forward here?
Well, this, obviously, it will be tabled tonight pending they have responses to PRC to do, uh, we have, so far, I've heard the landscape plan.
Comments down, I'm, I don't wanna say that these are gonna be all our comments.
No, not at all, not at all, I think there's gonna be more comments based on the revised plans, for sure. Uh, we're asking for an, a dedicated landscape plan to show, uh, the buffering. Um, I'll look into what they did in terms of like, tree inventory, tree analysis of what's out there, if we don't have anything, would you like us?
Let's, let's have Bruce take a look here.
We can do that, have him take a look at the property of, uh, how those trees relate to what they're proposing as the undisturbed area.
Species and the size and what they're intending, intending to use, somebody, I heard somebody say, "Arbor Vitae."
We can, so if you're looking for a, a survey of what's out there today, we typically put that cost on the applicant, um, to go and do a tree study of what's out there based on. They only identify things based on the caliber, or at least they list the species that are present, we could start there.
I don't know that that's necessary, because my understanding in, in driving through here is that there's not a lot of trees that are gonna be salvaged.
Probably, not, not, not the development area.
Having Bruce look at their proposed landscape plan.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood that, so when the landscape plan comes in. Gotcha, sorry, that's, and that's our typical process anyways, I thought you were talking about what's out there today, I'm sorry. What else?
We got the internal sidewalks, we got the external sidewalks.
The one remaining question I had was, um.
Potential buffer.
Potential buffer.
Yep, and the one remaining question I had was the lot thirteen, AJ, I know you brought up that comment, I.
Figured I was gonna be thrown under the bus with that.
No, I, I kinda got thrown under a little bit, so it's okay, because, I mean, I, that's what the discussion was with staff, was, that conversation did take place about.
Right.
Do we take, they originally came in with.
The issue probably goes back to, hey, somebody goes and builds a treehouse on town property, they fall out and the town gets sued.
Yep.
Which is BS, not, it's BS that somebody would do that to the town.
Sorry.
Not that the town cares about it, the town should care about that, but the overall thing with that is, is crap, as far as I'm concerned, that somebody would, you know.
Yes, but it's a reality we are dealing with in several subdivisions.
Problem with our country right now.
And it's, it's a problem in a lot of our subdivisions right now, where land was dedicated to the town as part of the, where trees have grown up. And as I said earlier, trees are reaching an age, and a lot of our developments that are older now, trees are coming of age where its succession is taking place. Um, and obviously, mother nature is mother nature, so. It's a touchy subject when it comes to, does the town take the land and, and basically preserve it for its life? And, and I can't even say that, because if it is town land, I, I will never say it's forever wild, if something is wrong in there with those trees, we would have to go down and take them down at the expensive. At the expensive taxpayers.
Yep.
Trees are, trees are trees, they, they don't always stay up, um, so. Tangents, um, so that conversation took place.
Why you couldn't take a look at his idea conceptually and see whether or not.
We can revisit it, yes.
See whether or not we can do a little swapping between thirteen and fourteen, that's all.
Yeah, we can certainly revisit it.
Sense to do this, because the idea was to benefit the, the big picture approval of the project. And the impact to adjacent property owners.
Right, right, well stated.
Right, and on the flip side of that, if it is deed, it would have, if it went as proposed, we need details about what that deed restriction would include. Or does the board take it one step further with a conservation easement in addition over that land, which does preserve the trees one step further and prevents a property owner from clear-cutting.
And this might be, this might be a good application for that tool.
Yeah, we haven't used one in a while, but.
No, but this is a, this is a project where.
Pay attention to conservation easements either.
Yeah, no.
Not always, but actually, they do come up more often than you think, which is.
Meaning they, like, the homeowner that has a conservation on their, easement on their property, doesn't always acknowledge and obey.
The boundary.
Correct.
Yes.
No, but in this case, in the, the part of the development that you're talking about is.
Who's going back there?
It's far removed from.
Yeah.
Well, that part, that's, some of staff's comments or concerns about owning that back parcel is there's no way for us to get there. We have to cross the creek, so if something does happen back there, we're, we're pretty limited on how we can get access back there. So that was, that was.
We have a natural barrier.
The start of the whole conversation on do we or don't we?
The creek acts as a natural barrier to just about everybody.
Exactly.
I mean, that, that deed restriction. That deed restriction could also include, like, you're not putting a bridge on this thing either to make sure that you can go back there and clear things out.
Right.
And create a little hall.
I mean, there is.
A little, uh, motocross track or something back there.
And if you're not crossing the creek, then.
DPW director brought that concern up.
We'll revisit it based on this conversation, and then come back to you with more information on it.
Okay. He would have to clear-cut all that.
Alright, just keep moving forward.
Uh, alright, any other comments on this one? That I'm not thinking of off the, um, I'll revisit.
At the moment?
Yeah, I'll revisit the buffering, cause there's other techniques we could talk about, but I'll revisit the buffering when a landscape plan comes in to see what they offer.
Okay. So.
Hearing that, it's just a table.
Is this yours, you, you wanna move the table based on initial comments?
And, and, uh, request that staff begin, um, calculating a approval resolution with conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, we can do that as well.
Yeah, we all have to act on it to work comfortable, but, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll, 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 yep, we'll get it going. So, you second it?
Aye.
Hi, did you ask me?
Yeah, he was asking for your vote and he was.
I started talking, that's not me.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Alright, uh, flip a coin, or I'll just take it right to Panorama.
Aye.
Okay, Panorama, I will do one thing very quickly, this is a type-one action, as the applicant indicated, we have to start a lead agency process, the board does need to take a vote to take this over. To make this a type-one action and to begin the lead agency process.
I will move.
Get that out of the way.
That.
I'll second it.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Fantastic, alright, uh, questions for us or a discussion about the project, obviously, the applicant spent a great deal of time explaining what's being proposed there.
Honestly, I don't have, I, I think they did a complete job, I'm personally, I'm comfortable with it, I don't have many concerns at all. Um, you know, to me, it's kind of a preliminary overall, they get the road in, they come back for site plan on each individual parcel.
So, I have, I have a couple of concerns, so having, having spent some time trying to get our arms around two mixed-use developments where we're being asked to develop a project at large without approving, um, all of the buildings. This one's even fuzzier than that, because we can only consider the approximate number of pad sites and the approximate location of pad sites. And I'm not concerned about architecture or any of that stuff, what I'm concerned about is, um, whether or not they have a, a client that wants to take one of those pad sites. And change it in a way that might have caused us to take pause during this process. So, when I said to Peter, you're gonna have to do an awful lot of work each time you come back to the board. If you go through the seeker process and the similar questions that are posed in our factors for consideration. We need to revisit those each time.
Potentially each time, yes, so, for example, if the request right now is for, say, three hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And ultimately, it ends up where they want four hundred and fifty thousand square feet, then we're readdressing the entire.
Well, I think it, that's a change in, in the site plan.
Correct.
I think what I, what I'm suggesting is.
What it does is it brings it back to.
Seeker.
Seeker.
Yes, it, it most certainly does, cause this is a type-one action.
Right.
So, I, I'm suggesting that we make a list of things that we used as, as a factor for consideration at large. Meaning, we've got nine, approximately nine pad sites, approximately eleven buildings, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office space, a hundred thousand square feet.
Of retail and commercial.
Retail and commercial.
Potentially.
Yep, and, um, you know, limit to not more than three stories in height. Well, this is what they're telling us, so if we're, and, and all the people in the background, this is one of their, one of their biggest concerns, you know. Are, are they gonna end up with something like we have on old Penfield Road with these high-rise buildings or?
The four stories.
I'm suggesting that rather than just say, "Oh, no problem, you go ahead and do what you wanna do and just come back when you want." Um, because the process that we're gonna have to go through as a board and as a technical staff is gonna be just as arduous. If we don't put some parameters around what we used as the basis for the site plan improvements at this point.
As proposed, to start that, um, and I think that's where I wanted to kinda add on to Peter's response based on your question. Is that under seeker, this entire thing is based on max build-out overalls for both square footage of building space. And also parking count because of impervious, so they have to abide by the code for parking as well. Those are the things that factor into how this thing can get built out at its max, based on the thresholds the board would set as part of an approval process for the project. In its current state for this preliminary overall setting.
And I think we need to see at this point in time, the, how the configuration of the minimum number, number of parking spaces required by the code. Would look adjacent to the approximate pad sites that they have.
And I believe that's what they're attempting to show.
Now, I, when we, when we asked them about that during sketch, they were kind of vague about that, and I understand that there needs to be flexibility, and I'm okay with that. But if what comes back to us is materially different from what we've been looking at, let's not forget that what they presented tonight is not the same as what we looked at during the sketch plan.
Correct.
So.
Which won't be the same when we start looking at actual applications.
But actual, however, the different, the difference there now is you've set a threshold of the max building space, it's similar to how we're addressing Baytown Plaza right now. When we did the expansion to it, there was, all the analysis was done during that process for a max build-out situation. And you keep a running tally of what's left, and they are not to exceed that without reopening up seeker. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, I don't think any developer wants to do that.
Right.
So, um, Jim, I agree, I, I believe I actually had a comment in the PRC memo about quantify your parking spaces based on the square footage. Because that number also has to be established, I recall that from the famous C-one-hundred plan of Baytown Plaza. Where it kept a running tally of both the square footage of all the buildings that were labeled on it, as well as the, uh, parking counts for it as well. And now every time something comes back, this project's actually, uh, uh, probably has a more thorough review process after that point, because with Baytown, we're in a position where. All the, the buildings were laid out where they pretty much wanted to go with flexibility for the size of it, because maybe that one doesn't need to be there and we can allocate that space somewhere else. So, there's flexibility in that overall approval the board granted at Baytown Plaza. This one takes it one step further, because you haven't seen the architecture yet, or a final layout specifically for each lot. And again, nine, eight, ten, whatever that lot number ends up being. It all has to comply to the max threshold sent by, set by seeker during this review process. Um, so there is a baseline to start with, uh, with regards to how we address the, the, both the factors, uh, through seeker, and I apologize. through seeker and I apologize if the engineering report wasn't accessible, but it seems like there's a lot of data in there.
Yeah, I tried to download it twice, it's a hundred and sixty-eight minutes, it says, whoa, file too big.
We can work on making that a little bit smaller for you. So I will take note of that because we got the software to do it. But does my explanation of the situation help your concerns right now or?
You know, I'm just laying it out there for you guys, I mean, I, you know. But there's another thing that, that I asked the question during the sketch hearing about fire department access. So, well, you know, we'll deal with that when we get there, but, you know, right now, the way that they're looking at this, my concern would be they're gonna cut in this, this bed of streets up there so that they can show prospective tenants, you know, what the topography looks like and your, your pad might be up here and this is what it's gonna look like. We need to make sure that, or they need to make sure that they show us, um, how fire department access works. Not, not only in the final design, but during this stage.
Correct.
You know, we could end up with one or two buildings in the first three years and there's an emergency. And now you've got, uh, emergency responders trying to get there, going very deep, very high in elevation and maybe not being able to turn around. If the buildings are over thirty feet, then there's, you know, specific, um, fire department access.
Yeah, there's certainly a phased sort of-
I'm just, I'm saying, we, we ask them to show us-
Yeah.
How they're doing this, both during the construction process before the development is finalized and at each stage when they come back, those are, you know-
Yeah, it's, it's certainly a little, it's definitely complex in that way in terms of how everything gets developed and how fire access is maintained. Obviously, they wanna get all the utilities in now so that the site is serviceable for situations like that, so it's safe to navigate the cul-de-sac and the road because they are proposing a dedicated road from the get-go. And then, yeah, but the access, again, for fire or a situation like that would have to be addressed with each individual site plan that comes back for a public hearing, um, and its own-
And at the initial stage.
What about sidewalks and lighting then, too?
Well-
Yeah, so that's-
What is the lighting requirement here, is there, are they gonna have to form a lighting district?
Uh, I can't answer that right now, I do know that I asked the question, um, and it's something, it's on my list of things.
They probably will.
I would encourage lighting along the roadway, uh, at every driveway at the very minimum. I think they're gonna have parking lot lighting, in the end.
Is that required?
In, I'd have to check. I, I don't know honestly, because our lighting code is different, but-
They're not gonna sell, they're not gonna sell that much space in, in the dark, so, you know.
There's gonna be a lighting plan to this and I think that's something to ask for at least upfront in the interim along the roadway. And then again, you'll see one for each site as it comes in, that dark sky compliant, all those good things, but in the, this first stage of development for this, this access road and all the infrastructure, I would think there's gonna be some lighting that takes place now, but that's a question that I'd like to get clarified from the applicant.
And then lastly, uh, the, the gentleman who, who made the comment about, uh, you know, how they were intending to do this and hoping to do that, um, he, he had a valid point with respect to they're gonna flag all the large trees, define large tree, um, and, you know, if you end up cutting them all down because it better suits your marketing plan is, that's something we're preparing to let them do. So I, you know, at, at the very least, I think we ask them to, to tell us in writing, you know, who's gonna flag them? What, what criteria are they gonna use to flag on, is it, you know, certain caliber, certain age, um, you know, and how far are they willing to go to save trees, um, you know, whatever.
Just provide us information about your tree preservation plan and we'll start from there, because they do have some trees indicated on the plan currently. They did, yeah. Tree survey. They did do a tree survey.
Twelve inches and larger.
Twelve inches and larger, yeah. But, you know, he, he was very careful, Peter, in, in saying, well, you know, we'd like to keep them.
Well, we- But understanding that it's a commercial industrial zoned area. So, you know, I wanna relocate my business there, I wanna build a building. Crap, you know, it's a beautiful two acre lot, but there's three trees right in the middle where my building has to go, I guess I'm going somewhere else.
I don't, I don't, I think maybe that's the other extreme, the flexibility that they're subject to us is that they can swing. So if they can swing, then, you know, we should define some type of tree conservation in a, in a very prime piece of real estate in the town.
Absolutely agree.
You, you write it up, you describe it however you think, you know.
I get fancy with my fingers tomorrow. Or next week, because I don't know if my brain's gonna be ready for tomorrow.
And it would behoove them, I mean, it would, it would seem that saving them, if they want a high-end office park, like, setting, you want the trees.
And they, they bring up, they give the example of Linden Oaks and look how well tree, although that's been there for how many years?
They went way out of their way to save trees in Linden Oaks.
Thirty-plus years.
Way out of their way.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they both have challenges of the slopes and topography of the area, so-
Exactly.
I mean, you pull up that colored plan they had today, they, they gave a pretty good representation of, uh, what's out there today and what they're proposing to disturb. Peter said it very, very accurately, a lot of what's being preserved is dictated by the slopes. And I don't think they want to encroach on anything that doesn't need to be encroached upon because the preservation of the EPODs and minimizing disturbance to them is among one of the top priorities for the site. I mean, yeah, it probably could be a lot more intense, but nature doesn't really let it and they've come in with a, a applicable project for the site.
Okay.
So I hear table with all those things, um, begin our type one, uh, process for lead agency, it's gonna take thirty days to get our responses back again. And, uh, they will, they have submitted that zoning board appeals application regarding setbacks, that's a conversation we can have at a later date, uh, how you feel about that, um, just kinda let all this soak in, especially with the comments we heard tonight, um.
What about the start times?
Uh, do you wanna know them currently?
Through seven, right?
Seven to seven and then eight to four on Saturday, no Sunday unless you get town board approval.
Not uncommon with both.
I'm okay with that.
Not uncommon with multiple.
I'm not, I don't, I personally don't really wanna get involved in that as our-
That would be my recommendation.
As our board, if they can work something out with the developer and someone, then I'm-
That, that's, it's tough to control that sometimes. I mean, in the dumpster pickup, that has its own, that applies to the same thing, you can't be there before seven o'clock to do dumpster pickup.
Well, but certainly the, the HOA can ask the developer-
Yes.
Can you hold off on the, the nail guns until eight o'clock or so, you know?
Right now, the machines, yeah.
Well, they're hearing all the backup alarms on the dump trucks and the backups and stuff.
Well, it's wintertime and noise carries and-
Yeah, it's, the, the initial grading started in the fall for this project and the leaves have been fallen since, so certainly a different setting now than what it will be in four months, um.
Yeah.
But it echoes and, right.
Yeah, well, my guess is, I mean, if it goes constant, it'll go a lot faster than five years. Otherwise, you'll have one building with some construction sounds, then quiet until they sell the next place.
I bet, I bet you once they get the first building or two, it'll go.
Right, but then what that does is that shortens the overall time. So as the neighbor, it's okay, would you like, you, you, you know, there's, let's say, nine structures going up, they potentially are all concurrent and it's all done in a year. Or it's one here, one there and, and it takes five years, but sporadic, so.
I think five years is optimistic, though.
There's a lot of work to be done.
What's the need for office space line industrial?
Apparently it's growing.
Yeah, you'd be surprised, there's a, there's a, there's a, uh, a large effort regionally to attract businesses that are looking to relocate and this area's been identified as having a, a large population of skilled workers.
Also a lot of residents and demand for those services that were once, that are currently not available too. And we get people calling us every day about where can we go?
Any trouble at all?
We get people calling us every day, whether they're, um, you know, a medical company, uh, anything of that nature, someone looking for office space and they're saying, where can we go, where can we go? And oftentimes, it's barely enough space for what they're looking for because it's kind of a vacant plaza or something. I'll give you an example, right now, uh, not strong.
RGH.
RGH is looking at the remaining void section of Penn Fair Plaza, they finally found something they can move into that meets their sizes, but it took them, I think, what, three years to look for something of that size and it's coming back, there, there are filling in spaces that we have, but that demand is growing. So it, I, I think anywhere's from one, three to five, like Peter said, is a very applicable timeframe for this construction. But the thing that this board has to really look at is, yes, construction's gonna happen, it happens during residential development, it happens during this, it's the impact, potential impact of noise after it's done. That's the thing you look at in seeker, because construction is construction, there's no way to really shield that unless you build a dome. But what are these uses after the fact, and that's why we have the buffers in place to residential to have that significant gap between property lines.
In a project like this, the buildings themselves provide audible buffers for noise.
Certainly, I mean, everything's gonna be contained inside, so. All those things that come as we begin the seeker process, but we can table it and we can start getting some initial things going.
Let's get this party quick, moving along, ten thirty. Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
One more.
We got two more.
One more.
No, one more?
You're adding stuff to the agenda, what's wrong?
Yeah, the sketch.
Sketch, it's all got left, I've done anything else.
Good.
Look at me, just moving along.
All right, let's go.
Okay. Sketch plan for, uh, combat construction marathon engineering of the proposed seventy-five lot cluster subdivision on Jackson Road. I don't anticipate anyone sending a sketch letter tonight because I think there's a little bit of soak time anticipated with this project. Obviously, there were some public comments out there that, uh, had some validity.
On the drainage, the, the, uh, depth to bedrock?
Yep, and, I mean, those, again, sketch plan, a lot of that would have to be reviewed, going into preliminary files since they've done the preliminary testing. Uh, I can check in that if they can provide us more data about basements versus patio homes, I know they're driven to get basements in there because that's what sells, obviously.
You know what? This town is inundated with single-family homes on basements that have severe water intrusion.
A lot of rock out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and this one is particularly troublesome because they're going to have ejector pumps in these basements, so you've got rock, you've got water intrusion, and if you've got a failure of an ejector pump-
You have a full swimming pool.
Well, then, then you've got a, then you've got a very serious-
You have a septic tank for a basement.
You've got a very serious, um, public health problem. Remember Mallory Lane and the church was gonna be built east of that? Has the town considered, uh, any of these projects? Telling them that they have to be on SLA?
I don't know if we have, but I'm thinking, this just popped in my head and I'll have to review if I can ask this question at this phase, is if they end their reports, and I don't think they have, might correct me if I'm wrong, uh, some sort of geotech to know it's out there yet.
No, I haven't seen anything.
So it's something to consider to see if it's even viable because if they're selling dollars, we're at one to five feet right now with the various holes they did test pits on. Obviously, no basement is five feet deep unless it's crawl space. It's something I can investigate.
So every one of those becomes a bathtub in an area where you have-
Right.
-shallow rock and high water table. And, and we heard from people, um, who live close by this site.
That that is in case of the fact.
Didn't they, did they have that at, uh, Atlantic and, uh, Five Mile Lane when they built those?
They had deeper, they had deeper ones and they had enough material on site so that they can make it balance and bring up houses that were shallow. I mean, there is probably some basements that are very close to bedrock.
This is a flat, you know where this is.
I don't, I don't know how, there, there's, this thing falls off from the road, if that guy says his house is the high point and it gets lower from there on back, uh-
So you go in with a hole ram-
They're gonna have some challenges.
And you bam, 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 and you, you literally break it up with a big hole ram.
Yeah, that's all you're allowed, I'm, I didn't mean to cut you off during your question, but I know people think about it when it comes up, is what type of blasting are you doing? It's only for utilities.
You're all gonna blast, or you're gonna do it all with a- Anybody's-
For utilities, that's all they can do.
Remembers in the town of Penn Field where we were blasting for basements, sanitary sewers, storm laterals. We used to blast here.
Yeah, oh, there's a great example that March brings up all the time where there's a house that they blasted for a basement and that guy has his own swimming pool in the basement right now because he's got two Crocs and probably eight sump pumps and I'm exaggerating the eight, but- Mallory, Mallory. Yep, so, since then-
High force sumps.
No, no, you know, since then, we do not blast for basements.
High force, one's a backup, high force.
That's huge.
They use that to quarry.
What I'm talking, what I'm supposed to be talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think some initial-
Yeah, he got a call from his wife one night during, while we were up on the dais saying, we have an issue with the basement.
The water's rising.
Yeah.
I think there's some initial concerns here regarding, uh, geotech, depth of water, because you asked that question, Jim, it was a great question, which they didn't have the answer to yet. There's also questions about, and I'll leave it up to you if you wanna have some soak time before we dive into this, about the conventional plan.
I was gonna ask about that, if that's even legit.
It's, it's close, it's close. Correct, and that's, that's a conversation that, again, if you wanna have some soak time on it, and I would say, I would say review two things, this plan and the plot plans that Matt referenced during his presentation. There's individual eight and a half by elevens of all the lands that are shown in the conventional plan that would be, that are currently or would be encumbered by wetlands and their boundaries as part of their lots. And as we did in Windsor Ridge, are these feasible lots in a conventional plan? Would these be lots that we would see as acceptable with usable backyards, uh, usable land and they're not being too restricted? This is an example where you have a wetland coming within, you know, probably ten to fifteen feet of the property there.
Of the house?
Of the house, sorry, I'm getting there. Just talked a lot today.
Yeah, no, I get it.
And, and you have a wetland boundary that, in this example that Doug scrolled to, is about fifty feet from the corner of the house, so they provided dimensions, these are things that I would ask you to look at before the next meeting to say, all right, let's talk about these lots on the conventional plans and determine if they are acceptable lots, if not, they need to remove them and redraw, reconfigure the plan. I know, they are showing, keep in mind that when they're, whoop, hang on, too fast, go back. Back a page, whatever you just did. Okay, this is an example where they are showing a mitigation area.
A mitigation area?
So-
Somebody who didn't have wetlands now has a ton of wet.
Yeah, it's a wet to wet situation. It's a wet to wet, so-
It's all waterfront property, they should be able to charge more.
So, again, I would ask that you consider that as you review it, there are properties in town that have wetlands on in this part of it, it happens. But, again, look at it in terms of conventional plan.
A lot of people would find having wetlands on their property design.
Oh, yeah, if they love birds and butterflies and bugs, yes, they would love it, they'd have a great time. So, take a look at that.
West Nalviers, baby.
That's the present thing come up about was. That, I would say is the one thing you really take a look at is this conventional layout and what they provided for data on that. We can ask for additional, uh, geotech information. Don't, it won't be ready by the next meeting, I tell you, it's not gonna, it's gonna take more than two weeks. But, I think, we have to, obviously, we have to determine density first with this conventional plan and to see if the whole thing is, uh, reasonable.
Yeah. What's, what's the buffer for federal wetland, fifty?
Nothing. Federal has nothing, the state-
State?
State wetlands have the, have the hundred.
A hundred, okay.
Yep.
So, um, with respect to looking at the conventional plan, you said, you know, we should look at the, well, we, we really need you guys to look at.
Oh, we will, uh, we will, we have them, but I'll have more feedback for you.
Just wanted to mention, um, ca, um, down at Cobblestone and Victor, and this goes back twenty, twenty-five years ago, um, where they had, uh, down, down in the valley and in, in the deep end of the golf course there, they had a, a series of, of houses in one phase that had large ejector pumps. They, they had them put, um, audiovisual notification devices in the event that the pump failed or they lost power. And they made them put, um, either a, uh, un, un interruptible power supply or a backup generator.
We did that.
So, um, but you're talking about, how many lots here? Seventy-five lots?
Seventy-five lots.
So, you know.
Part of, I, I can actually, I got a good update for you on that point. We are currently in the process of updating the design specs for the town because this would be the first app, second application of them, but first on a mass scale like this, we did it at Waveridge Court across the street in this subdivision with the E-ones that went to a low pressure and down Jackson towards here. That kinda maxed out that capacity on that line. This, again, would be going down plank all the way to Shu Craft. Um, but we are updating our section right now, uh, with the DPW director and with Mark, town engineer, um, to review the implementation of these pumps because as we move east, there's a good chance we're gonna see more of this. Because right now, there is no.
It's not fair, any, any more than it would be fair to allow developers to sell homes to people that they, you know, six months later, they discover that they've got, you know, very wet basements and they can't utilize the space and.
There'll be people who buy these houses who don't know that there's an E-one pump there. They just flush a toilet and go on with their life.
Yeah.
People don't know.
Uh, they don't.
That's right.
You can sign as many pieces of paper as you want and they completely forget about that because they got their brand-new kitchen, so.
Great Trail, uh, if you go straight out toward, uh, then, T-U-R, I forget where it was.
Aberystwyth.
North of that, there was a development way out of woods.
Like the Rudy, did Rudy?
No, no, Rudy didn't do that. Are you talking about the, uh?
A silver one or something?
Stacy was here, Tracy, Stacy.
Stacy?
Stacy was here.
The Beach Brook?
We did the site walk.
You say Walter or?
And those homes are so far.
Well, and.
I think it was a power or something. They needed some subs, and so we made them, uh, well, house generators. That was part of the condition for approval. That was probably about fifty years ago.
Yeah, easy.
I'll have to tap into Cas's brain tomorrow.
Yo.
Look, I know, tell me about it.
Bill, was it Beach Brook here? Right off, Emery and Castro.
Homes, but let's see, Embry, where's Quell Trail?
I thought that was Rudy right there.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a farm or something there on the right end, yeah.
All that stuff on the left, that was Ranger.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. This is after Fran Hirschwood, like that stuff.
Five, fourteen.
It's a Rudy special. I mean, that's what he, that's his niche, you know, it's like these little areas.
Yeah, those, yeah, those might be.
Tucks four or five houses in.
Antitamaso, wasn't it Antitamaso?
Waylon Road. Couple of those have, uh, like jet engines in the basement.
Mike seems to recall it could be an Antitamaso situation as well.
Yeah, it's not Rudy, I think it's.
Those seem a little too big for Rudy.
Too big for Rudy. Yeah.
There's some homes back in there that they, uh, ended up.
Well, I, I would really like to look at. I'd really like to look into it. What, rap?
Rap.
Soaking time.
Uh, table the sketch plan pending, not any things that I have to follow up on that we just discussed about.
Excellent.
So moved.
Second.
He's with a second.
Hetski?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Mauer?
Hi.
Tidy?
Hi.
That concludes tonight's presentation and formal video gathering. Class eleven.